January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Tonight's meeting is being recorded by Milford TV. If anybody would like a copy of the recording, please feel free to reach out to a member of the administration or the school committee. We've got a full crowd tonight, very excited about tonight's meeting, a lot of positive things to showcase tonight. Before we get started, we do have, actually, a first order of business is the approval of minutes. So I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January eleventh, two thousand and eighteen meeting. A motion from Joe, seconded by Jen, four in favor, all of those in favor. All right, next order of business is invitation to speak.
No, announcements correspondents?
Oh, sorry, announcements correspondents, sorry.
I actually have two items. First and foremost, first of all, welcome, everybody. I think it's been, it's, so I'm coming up on six years, it's been a very long time since I've seen so many, so many people come to this meeting, so it's great to see everybody here. So, Mr. Chairman, my first announcement would just be, unfortunately, I'm very, with a very heavy heart, I'm sad to announce that we've, we did have a teacher who actually, one of our members of our faculty, a current member of our faculty, who actually passed away. I just asked if we can have a moment of silence in memory of Carrie Born, friend Sandheim. She was a teacher at Woodland most recently, prior to that also at Stacy. She was only thirty-six years old when she passed. So it was unfortunate for her and her family, very sad circumstance, so if we could just ask for a moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
And I do have one other, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So my other announcement is really just, on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, at four o'clock, in the Davenport Auditorium here at the high school, the Milford High School Global Citizenship Program is going to be presenting a movie called Italian American Baseball. It actually, it's actually gonna be premiering at the Sundance Film Festival. It actually prominently, there's a number of different folks that are in it, but most, most connection to Milford is a gentleman by the name of Chris Cabela, who actually is currently a major league baseball player, very prominently presented throughout the film, so it's gonna be airing. There're gonna be a number of different items auctioned off, it is designed to be a fundraiser. So we'll have a number of items auctioned off, and, you know, just kinda looking through them real quickly, there'll be, you know, signed baseball by Terry Francona, NFL football signed by Rob Gronkowski, we'll let you know after Sunday if anybody still wants that. You know, autographed picture by Tim Wakefield, Chris Cabela, autographed bat and hat, autographed bat by Joe Batista, by Jose Batista. So a lot of different opportunities, but that's on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, four o'clock, right here at the high school auditorium.
Thanks, Scott. Any other announcements, correspondence, Joe?
I have, Mr. Chairman, on February seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and seventh, the Milford High School Auditorium, the Milford Public Schools will be sharing an information social, on social emotional learning programs and anti-bullying offer, I'm sorry, anti-bullying effects. This will include an overview of social emotional programming across the Milford Public Schools, anti-bullying interviews, intervenes, and programming, and also an overview of the bullying prevention and intervention plan. We'd like to have a lot of turnout, a big turnout, so this is always a hot topic, bullying and everything like that, so if you guys can come that day, please come, there'll be a lot of good information for everybody.
Thanks, Joe. Any other announcements or correspondence?
So I've got one quick thing, Mr. Chairman. The Woodland Elementary School was actually, actually won a national award for its design, and I'm gonna pass this around to the committee, and we'll eventually put it, I'm gonna hold it up so they can see it. So, so when students attend Woodland, they are actually attending an award-winning school. The architects won a design award for Woodland Elementary School, and we're gonna put the plaque in Woodland, and they're also highlighted in a recent edition of American School and University, which is an architectural magazine, which I know Joe subscribes to.
Yes.
They're there, they does a my copy.
So I'll pass this around to everybody, but it's very exciting, and if you've been in Woodland, you'll understand why it won, why it won an award. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Kevin?
That's it.
All right, just had one more announcement, so we have the, the two thousand and eighteen kindergarten registration night is coming up on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh. It's gonna be held here at the high school, we're doing a parent information presentation from six to six-thirty, and then kindergarten preregistration and packet pickup will be from six-thirty to seven-thirty in the high school cafeteria. Once again, that's on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, from six to seven-thirty. Next order of business is invitation to speak. Is anyone here that would like to address the board tonight? Invitation to speak. All right, we have the recognition of the unified sports team and coaches. Jen, do you wanna?
Come up?
Bring your team? Bring 'em all in.
Bring the whole squad.
Come on in. Hi, everybody.
And Jen, if you could just sit and speak into the microphones, just 'cause they'll pick it up at TV at home.
Your favorite thing, Jen, your favorite thing to do.
I like the uniforms.
So maybe you can tell us a little bit about the program, how it started, and kinda where we're headed with it.
So, well, Special Olympics is very heavily into unified sports and trying to work to get more programs in schools, and to start at a younger age, 'cause a lot of the Special Olympic programs were community-based. So that's why we have, their goal is to give the athletes every opportunity that your, every student has, the same opportunity, equal opportunity. So in doing so, they started unified sports with MIAA. We've always had unified sports in the community programs, but not in the schools. So they got together with MIAA and started off with track. Track did so well, they moved to basketball, and now bocce, and then Milford, Milford is the first team to do unified wrestling that's not from Special Olympics. We did that on our own and got other schools to come on board, because we had a lot of passionate coaches that wanted to do the sport, and a lot of kids that wanted to do the, do the wrestling. So we have four unified teams at the high school now.
That's great, excellent. And did you just have a wrestling meet before this?
We, I, they just came out of their wrestling meet right here, they just finished.
Nice, how did you guys do?
So we came straight up from the middle of their wrestling meet, they were wrestling in North Attleboro tonight.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, yeah, and you can't do that, you can't do this without wonderful coaches and students from Milford High that make the programs a success. We have a great community here.
Any questions or comments for the team?
So Jen, thank you for, for coming in and kinda introducing, so thank you guys for coming in and for participating in, in our unified sports program. You guys all having fun?
Yeah.
Yeah? Good. Just kind of? Kind of?
He's just beginning to learn how much fun it is.
I got it, I got it. Thank you, guys, and, and, you know, what I would say is just thank you to the coaches, thank you to the parents of, of everyone that's involved, not just the, the parents of the athletes, is, I know it's a commitment, I know it's a lot of work to get your students to and from, all these things, whether you're, whether you're an athlete, whether you're the parent of one of the athletes or a parent of one of the coaches, just thank you, guys, for, for your contribution to the community, and really to help all of our athletes really learn from each other. It's, it's, it really is an amazing thing that, you know, I've had an opportunity to speak to some of the athletes on both sides, and that all participate in this, in this activity, and I think it's, it's amazing what, how much learning and what a, what an experience it is for everyone. So just thank you all for, for everything you do and your continued contributions, and keep fighting. I hear you guys are doing a great job on the wrestling team, I can't wait to see the results and how the season ends for you guys. And we'll bring you guys back once your season's over, and, and hear, get an update from you. What do you think?
Jen, I noticed that Ben's here, do you wanna mention?
Oh, yeah, it also, so part of the unified athletes program is we have, we have two members on the Youth Activation Council for the state of Massachusetts, so it's made up of twenty students from around the state of Massachusetts. And Ben, Ben Rizzoli and Madeline Boyle, right there in the red t-shirt, they represent the state of Massachusetts on the Youth Activation Council on how they can make unified sports better, how we, how we can increase leadership opportunities for our students, and they work on a bunch of different skills, they meet once a month at the state office in Marlboro, and as, since Madeline and Ben have done such a wonderful job, they got chosen to represent the state of Massachusetts at the national games in Seattle this summer. So they'll be going to Seattle. And they're gonna continue advocating for, for the programs and, and teaching other people on, on the benefits of unified sports. I mean, for those who don't know, I know not everybody in here knows what unified is, but unified sports is teams made up of kids with and without disabilities, just in case anyone doesn't know. I forgot to say that at the beginning, I'm sorry. I just assume everybody's in my head and they know what I'm thinking.
Well, thanks, everyone, for coming in, I really appreciate it and my success. Oh, we have some gifts for you, too. Joe, you wanna come up and help me up?
Tried to fit cars in there, but the bag wouldn't hold them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Connects right in there, that's where all the microphones go. That's so the folks at home on TV can hear us.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you all.
All right, Jake, everybody?
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Have a good night.
All right, our next order of business is the Milford High School Student Recognition, and we have several students we're gonna be recognizing tonight. The, the first two that I'd like to call up are Evan Mackey and Juliana Tracy. Evan and Juliana here, yep. Come on up. So you can take a seat right there at the table.
And parents, feel free to come up and take pictures, don't worry about a bad angle, you can come right up and take a picture, so don't be shy about that.
So Evan and Juliana received the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent Certificate of Academic Excellence, and this is presented to two members of the senior class based on their cumulative average, rank in their class, and personal selection by the superintendent among the top five percent of the class, so an outstanding achievement, we're very proud of you, and welcome to the school committee.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to make a comment, or?
I'd just like to say thank you very much to both my parents and the faculty and staff here. I've had a lot of support along the way that's helped me be successful. Thank you.
I'm really grateful for the opportunities that Milford High School has provided for me, the extracurriculars and music is a big part of what helped me succeed here.
Right, thanks, Evan. Any questions for Evan or Juliana?
Could someone maybe explain what the selection process was, and is that something you do?
So, yeah, so it comes from the high school, actually, makes the selection, but it's, it's really, these students demonstrate academic excellence, consistent, high-level performance over time, and, you know, these two students in particular are very reflective of, you know, kinda the spirit of this award, and I think they're probably too, too humble to kinda share all their accomplishments and accolades, but they're both two very accomplished students, and we're very proud of them. And do you guys wanna share kind of what you're looking to maybe study at the next, at the next level?
Stolen question.
I know I do.
I'd like to go on to, into college and study neuroscience or cognitive science, work on a PhD in the future, is my goals for now.
I plan to go into either business or pre-law, so.
That's great, great, excellent. So I know we're, we're deep in the midst of getting back all the early decision and early action, have you guys started to hear from schools yet?
All my applications were a regular decision, so I'm still waiting to hear back.
What are your, what, how about your, for yourself?
Right now, I'm deciding between the University of Michigan and Boston College. I still have a couple applications I'm waiting to hear on, but right now, those are my two main picks.
Okay, and what are, what are your top choices? If you could pick one, if you could pick one or two, where, what are your top choices?
Columbia University or Johns Hopkins.
Wow, I mean, all very, very impressive schools, not that, not that all of them aren't at this point, but that's, that you've had, those are some ambitious ones, which is fantastic, it's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, and can you talk a little bit about some of the things you've been involved in at here at the high school, you mentioned music program?
Yeah, I've been in the music program since third grade and in the orchestra, and it's been a really critical part of my life and my career at high school, and it's taken me beyond the classroom with a lot of volunteering opportunities, and it's really been like the, the keystone to my success.
I'm an athlete, I play basketball and volleyball, and I'm also the president of peer mentoring, and I'm also in peer mediation, National Honor Society, and best buddies.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I was just gonna say, we hear a lot at these meetings, and we've heard from your principal, too, about the importance of doing the extras beyond attending class and doing well in class, and there's, it's no surprise that two students involved in the things you have been involved in are sitting in front of us today, and you didn't get there by accident, so congratulations to both of you, and I'm sure you're gonna be successful wherever your path will lead you, because you already have those great work habits and that commitment to so many things that have already made you really worthy candidates and scholars, so thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have some gifts for you as well, and certificates.
So kinda look this way and smile when they hand you your award.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for coming in.
And we'd like to keep coming, Mr. Chairman.
I know, they do, it's fantastic. So next up, we have Kayden Kelly and Amber Sterns. Thanks for coming, Amber and Kayden. So Amber and Kayden received the Worcester County Superintendent's Association Scholar Award. This is presented to two members of the senior class based on their academic and extracurricular accomplishments. Each year, these students are invited to attend a luncheon with the superintendent and Milford High School principal, to be recognized along with scholars from other districts. This year, the luncheon was held on January ninth at Assumption College. So Kayden, Amber, would you like to sort of give us an update on where you are and how you felt about the award?
Well, to start off, I just wanna say thank you to Dr. McIntyre and Mr. Allen for taking me to a great luncheon at Assumption. It was pretty cool, the, me with the big guy who calls all the snow days. But, yeah, it was a great time, I learned a lot about the, my fellow peers in Massachusetts and how established and awarded they are, it was a great time.
I also really appreciate the award, but I was out sick on the day of the lunch, so.
Oh, the annual lunch.
Yeah, that's a good enough.
One, one thing I can say, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, in the room, what happens is they give a biography of everybody who gets an award, and it's an impressive room, and you almost feel very inadequate sitting in there. And, you know, Kayden and Amber, both, both like, what, what they've done and accomplished stood up with anybody in Worcester County. We had somebody who saved somebody's life, and I leaned over to Kayden at that point, I said, why can't you do something like that?
He saves yours once a week.
But it was, and I enjoyed the opportunity, and it's one of my favorite afternoons, because I do get a chance to sit down with a couple students, and I was disappointed you couldn't come when you were sick, but it was great to get to know Kayden a little bit better. I've met him a couple times over the years, very impressive young man, and looking for great things in his future, I'm sure of Amber as well, but I'm disappointed I didn't get a chance to really chat with him.
Sorry.
So just real quick, and I apologize if I, if I missed this during the introduction, what, what, what grade are you guys both in, both seniors? Okay, and so some, some more questions, how, how's the college search going? I know that's sort of a stressful time, and.
Very stressful.
What's, I, I have one of your, one of your classmates at home, so I, I get the, the blow-by-blow updates.
You know how it goes.
How's that process going, and, and what, what are your aspirations for the future? What are we, when's the, when's the baseball movie that we're gonna see with you guys?
I guess so. So my number one school I know is Tufts. I was engaged in the Quest Bridge program, which is a scholarship program that gives low-income and single-parent households the opportunity to attend the top schools in the nation for little or no cost. So that, that program really opened, opened a lot of opportunities to go to Tufts and a bunch of the mini Ivies and Ivies across the nation, so I'm hoping they can help me get to where I need to be.
Where do, where's that?
Where do, where would you like? My number one is Tufts.
Okay, what are, what are you looking to study?
Economics.
Okay, excellent.
That's hard to beat.
Notice I'm not letting him ask me what I do.
Smart. I applied early action to all my schools, and I'm down between UMass Dartmouth and Westfield State right now.
Okay.
I'd really like to swim for both of them, or either one, and I don't really know what I wanna go for, but we'll see, I'd like to try what I can.
Okay, excellent. Also, also very great, very, very good school, so, well, good luck to both of you guys, and, and again, just amazing congratulations to both of you. Really, you're just, you get, and along with all the other students that are being recognized here this evening in different programs, just you, you are the reason why we, why we're here, it really is it, that's, you guys are it, you're the reason why we come. So you remind us of why we come to these meetings and spend hours doing all this stuff, so just thank you, and thank you both for, for what you do and continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you've obviously been very successful academically, and I know you're involved in a number of different activities, you wanna talk a little bit about some of the activities that you've been involved in in New Year's here at Milford High?
Three-sport varsity athlete, I'm in NHS, I'm in best buddies, global citizenship program, that's it. That's peaceful, bud.
Once again, hard to beat. I'm the swim team captain, I play lacrosse, I'm kind of in charge of the peer mediation program with Itzel over here, and I'm in NHS and NAHS, so.
Excellent.
Oh, well, environmental science is something that my teacher, Mrs. Hands, on last year really got me into, and it makes me really angry when I think about what we're doing to the earth, and so I wanted to get started in environmental club. We've had a couple meetings so far, and it's been going pretty well, we have a lot of people, and we are planning on having a couple of bake sales, raising money to donate to companies for solving the issues with global warming and climate change, and we did a campus cleanup back in, I think, November, and we picked up like five trash bags worth of trash on the grounds alone. So I'd like to do that again and keep it running next year, too.
That's great.
That's amazing, I mean, just, not just that you, I, I think there's a lot of students and a lot of people that are of all ages, but certainly teenagers, that they see things in the world that get them angry, get them frustrated, and rather than just stay angry and stay frustrated, you actually stood up and did something about it, and that's.
That's what my mom told me to do.
That's.
It's your sister, mother.
Your mom's a very smart lady.
She motivated me, I complained about it a lot at home, and she told me to get out there and do something, so.
And I love that you did it, so number one, thanks to your mom. And, and you know what, that also says a lot about you and your relationship with your parents, and, and just your integrity and your, and your personality, too, that not only did you listen to it, 'cause let's be honest, and maybe you realize this, and maybe you don't, teenagers, believe it or not, seniors in high school don't always listen to everything their parents have to say.
That is true.
But, but you did, and you, and you kinda took the bull by the horns, so to speak, and, and you really stood up to do something, and, you know, that's, that's what we need more of out there, so just keep doing what you guys are doing.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks for coming in, we got a couple certificates for you as well, and some gifts. Congratulations. Congratulations for coming in, congratulations.
I think Amber, did, Amber, didn't you just have a meet?
Yeah.
And the, her team that she's the captain of just won.
Congratulations, all right. Have a good night, thank you for coming. All right, and now we have Emma Masarelli and Itzel Torres. Hi, thanks for coming in as well. So Emma and Itzel received the NESDEC National School Development Council Award for academic growth and student leadership and learning, to be presented, this award's presented to two members of the senior class that have shown tremendous academic growth and leadership at Milford High School. So do you wanna tell us a little bit about the, the award and, and your experience here?
My academics definitely started off rocky from middle school. It was definitely hard to have that transition between eighth grade and ninth grade, there's a lot more expected of you, but as the years have gone on, my grades have definitely improved, and for that, I'm really grateful, that things have gotten better.
Oh, so you think what she said, uh, it was rocky, it was hard in the beginning, 'cause I was struggling to like, um, since I speak two languages, it's like hard to like have, learn, learn like in school all English and at home all Spanish, so it's like, it's hard transition, so in high school, it was a big transition, and it was expected, expected of you to be better, and I think my teachers and the faculty here that helped me improve my academics.
Excellent. Any questions or comments, Joe?
Did you, did you find it easy to reach out and have people help you in your, since you speak two languages? Did it make it feel, did they, were you welcomed, as in like, we will help you get better and do things a lot more smoother?
Yes.
Did you find that more of an outreach, and people were actually willing to help you out a lot?
I found that people were willing to help you, but you also had to reach out yourself.
Right.
So it was kind of like meeting in the middle, and once I was able to extend that hand and meet my guidance counselors in the middle, and my teachers, and really ask for the extra help, I definitely grew as a person, and especially in my academics.
No, she barely speaks, literally.
Like, I'm thinking the same thing.
It's hard, it's hard to reach out when you're, when you're new, so, or your first year, so I understand.
Yeah, and Josh?
Ladies, could, could you tell the committee a little bit about some of the, the leadership you've been involved in, and some of the ways that you've contributed to our community, not just your academics?
Well, since sophomore year, Ms. Bird introduced me to the peer mediation, and from that, whatever Amber was saying, I'm also one of the ones that lead it, and it's really helped the school profoundly, because that's just, students know that there is people there for you, and I, I like showing people that they're not alone, and then also the thing I've been involved in is the Blackstone Leadership Program that I was involved in freshman year, so I got to learn a little bit of that, and, yeah.
I have actually been involved in Special Olympics, more so, starting last year of my junior year. I'm in the youth council as, with Ben and Madeline, and I'm also in the government affairs team. So through that, I've definitely gotten a lot more experiences helping the community with inclusion, and talking with government members about more funding, and just having more support from them. And in school, I'm the chapter liaison for Best Buddies, and I've been involved in Sons of Italy as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
So ladies, once again, as, as we have with, with each of the folks that have come up, just thank you for, for coming this evening, and kinda sharing a little bit about your story, and, and again, it's, we get to hear from Kevin and the teachers and the faculty and the administration, we're gonna hear from some more teachers later, and that's really important for us, 'cause they help give us insight. I love having students coming in just from a personal perspective, 'cause you guys actually are, are on the receiving end of all the things that we're trying to do, so I'd love to kinda take the opportunity, when you guys are here, to find out how that's going. And you guys are two of our great success stories, just as all the students have been here this evening, so thank you, guys, for coming in and for sharing your success stories with us. As you guys are going through and getting ready to exit the high school, and exit your education experience through Milford, one of the things that I would ask to think about is, and share with Ms. Rowland and with your teachers, and I won't put you on the spot this evening, but, what would you like to see if you were gonna come back and do it again? What would you like to see different? What would you like to see, what can, what can we do more for students, and think about it? There's someone just like you that's entering Milford schools right now, right? They may be in first grade, they may be in, they may be entering, have just entered high school, they may be in any grade all the way through. If you could reach out and say something to that person, what would you say, and what are some things that we might be able to do to help? So I won't put you on the spot to, to do that right now, 'cause I know it's really nerve-wracking, but think about that as you guys are getting ready to sort of winding up, this is an exciting time in your life going through your senior year, and we talked about that before with some of our other seniors as well. But as you think about that, I, I would really ask you to really think about that a little bit, and, and see how we can help, 'cause we're all ears, we're always looking for, for really to hear from our students, and we hear through our teachers, the things that are going on in the school, so just, you know, if you think about that, we'd love the feedback, we'd love to hear from you and find out how we can help and support other students that are just like you that are coming up through our schools right now, all right? Going through the college selection process?
Yes.
You guys starting to look at that? So I get to ask you guys a same question, everybody has their little thing, this is mine. What's, what's on the list? Where would you like to go?
I did early action for all of my schools, I applied to Emmanuel College, Leslie University, and Framingham State, and I got accepted to all of them.
Congratulations.
And I'm hoping to study special education and political science.
Excellent.
Oh, I also applied to early action as well, I applied to eight schools, and so far, I've gotten accepted to all seven of them, just hearing. Oh, I also applied to early action as well. I applied to, um, eight schools and so far, uh, I've gone accepted to all seven of them, just hearing, waiting to hear back from one. And then I've been accepted to Fisher, UNH, the other UNH in Connecticut, New Haven, uh, Southern New Hampshire, Newbury, LaSalle, Johnson and Wells, and then Sacred Heart, waiting to hear from.
And what do you look in the study?
Uh, I wanna study hospitality tourism management.
Excellent.
Since I'm already in the program, that's what got me into it, but, yeah.
Excellent. Well, congratulations, ladies, and good luck. We look forward to hearing more great things from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Itzel, Itzel, you're the absolute best, uh, reaction of anybody who I presented the award to initially. So thank you for that. That was great.
I was just so shocked. That was just a friend.
I just wanted to also add, listening to that list and where you are right now, both of you, and, um, what you shared about the beginning, uh, what I noticed from both of you talked was your ability to reflect on where you started and kind of own that this really was difficult. Um, and I loved hearing that you reached out to people. I think for kids in the middle grades and the high school grades, it's so hard. I know I tell my daughter all the time, go find, talk to your teacher. Oh, my God, I couldn't possibly talk to an adult mom. That would just be horrible. Um, but you two have both found ways to do that and, um, you've really become leaders in your school. Um, and you didn't do that, it didn't just happen to you. You really persevered. Um, you could've easily gone the other direction and said, yeah, this is just really way too hard for me. You've, you've got, you know, challenges that you mentioned with the language and you both found a great way to walk out of here with your head held really high, having been contributors to Milford High School. Um, it sounds like you have great future plans ahead. So congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
You know, very proud of what you and your your peers have accomplished. And it's interesting, you know, we just, um, met six students that are all from very diverse backgrounds, right? Um, but yet they they've been able to succeed in i- i- in the Milford Public Schools. And one of the common themes is that not only are they succeeding academically, but they're all, all of you are involved in extracurricular activities, whether it's clubs, activities, athletics, music, and that certainly plays into it as well. So, um, you know, congratulations on your success. We do have a a couple of certificates for you as well and some gifts. Congratulations. Thank you for coming in. Nice. Congratulations. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Next order of business is the Milford Education Foundation.
Mr. Chairman, our audience is starting to dwindle.
I know.
Thinking we might as well wanted to do that at the end.
Vinnie and Christina, thanks for for coming in.
Tough act to follow, huh?
Thank you.
It is, yeah. It is a tough act to follow.
We wanna ask you where you're applying to college.
Way ahead of you.
That's right, we've got three Framingham.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna guess you're part of the Framingham State group that's going through.
Yeah, yes.
Gotcha.
All right. So we came in today or tonight to just give you a little bit of an, uh, the overview of the educational foundation that we've been working over the past couple of months to establish here in Milford. Um, just for a little bit of background, uh, we, in talking with other teachers in other districts and in doing a little bit of research, we discovered that a lot of towns in the area already have established foundations to support the education in their communities. In fact, some of them have been operating for decades. Uh, that was new information to me and and I don't wanna speak for Christina, but it was something, you know, it it sparked an interest in us, so we started to look a little deeper into what these communities were doing or what these foundations in these communities were offering the students in the school district and in the community in general. And, you know, we decided what a great idea for Milford and let's try to move forward. So here we are.
We are really lucky to, we have, um, begun the process of putting together a really dedicated board, um, of directors and we've been working really hard with them over the past few months to get some ideas out there and start some really exciting programs. Uh, we would really love to start offering grants for teachers. Um, things like enrichment programs for before school, after school, or even during the school, so we can bring things in for the students and the teachers, schools all across the district. We'd like to offer a scholarship at some point. And we really wanna work on bringing the community together, uh, both for families and students. Inside the school, outside the school, during the summer. It's really something we're very excited about.
All right. I think, you know, the previous, uh, students can attest to, Milford already has a lot of great opportunities out there, so we're certainly not coming in to replace or to change anything, but I think what, with an organization like this, we can bring together members from the entire community, whether, even if they don't have students in school right now, and really tap into some resources that may otherwise have gone unutilized. So one of the, the the first initiatives that we really started talking about early in the process was, um, developing some kind of recognition program for community members that have made a meaningful, positive impact on the educational opportunities for Milford students. Um, so, you know, we we know we already have the the Burton Aziz Award for teachers, but there hasn't really been anything for other members of the community. So, working with Mrs. Burns over at Memorial, um, we're excited to put together a community impact award that we will seek nominations for. And the qualifications to earn it would be having made a meaningful, positive impact to the educational opportunities for students in Milford. And I think it'll be a good opportunity to recognize some of the sometimes thankless work that so many people do, whether it's volunteering in the PTO, whether it's other, um, members of the community, you know, putting that extra effort into enriching the education in our schools. Uh, I mean, there's a number of different ways that this can be utilized. And so our hope is to be able to award this to two individuals a year and hopefully, and have it grow from there. So we are pretty much ready to s- to get this one started. So, um, for anybody that's interested in learning more about that, we'll put it on our website. Um, and we will, all the information you'll need will be there.
We also want to invite the community out. We're gonna hold an informational meeting here at the high school on Wednesday, February twenty eighth. Um, we understand that the success of this foundation really depends on the community coming together and recognizing that we need to work together to ensure that all our students have a strong education. So we want to invite anyone to come out, to ask questions, to hear what we're about, and to hear where they can get involved.
Any questions?
Joe? Um, so thank you for for coming. Um, just real quickly for those who may be watching at home as well, can you just kind of very quickly give an overview of what what is the Foundation for Education? What's your, sort of what's your mission? Um, what's your mission statement that you guys are working towards right now? What's the, what's the intended outcome?
Basically, we wanna support, supplement the educational opportunities for students in Milford. So at this point, you know, we're early in the planning stage, so we're, we're still exploring ideas of how that can best be done. But I'm hoping that this informational meeting will bring together some people that will come with some great ideas. In fact, we already had a few members of the community reach out. Um, I've had a couple of, I'm not sure about you, but I have a couple of parents to Milford students who are teachers in other districts that that have similar organizations. You know, they they seem very excited. They're happy to, you know, in our school, we do this and this is, you know, and, you know, we're, we're open to all the, all ideas and, you know, we're excited to get started. So, um.
And what's the best way, if a community member wants to let you guys give your, give your plug and give your commercial here, what's the best way for a community member, uh, that may be watching at home right now to be able to get in touch with you if they wanna get more information?
All right. So we set up a website. It's W W W dot M M F F E dot org. And all our contact information and overview of what we are all about can be found there. And we are also on Facebook and Twitter. Um, it's at M M F F E org, just above the, above the dot. Um, so we'll be posting updates there as well. Um, and then, you know, we both are teachers here in Milford, too, so if that doesn't work, you can email us with our Milford MA account. Uh, both at Memorial, feel free to come and find us.
Thank you.
I just wanted to sincerely thank both of you. I know Joe and I had talked, um, and a little bit with Kevin and a little bit with Bob before you, Kevin, about the need for an ed foundation in Milford. And similar to what you've said, having worked in several districts where I've seen these work really successfully, I do think it's something we've really been lacking in Milford. And we sit around the table, we look at the budget requests, we, you know, you can tackle certain things, other things just can't possibly fall into the realm of what a town budget can support. And other things maybe just wouldn't fit in there because they're out of the box or it's a pilot or something that's new and innovative and different that somebody just wants to try out. And I think that's where I've seen ed foundations really be successful. So I give you so much credit as two teachers for recognizing something that we're missing and finding a way to bring it to us. Um, so I imagine you'll have a lot of support from the community moving forward. Thank you.
We, we're very hopeful, but, you know, we've had, I think overwhelmingly positive response. So it sounds like we're, that we have an eager community out there that, you know, wanna be involved in whatever way they can and, you know, we embrace that.
That's great. Well, thank you.
You may have said this in the beginning and I probably missed it, but you are a five oh one C three.
Yep. So a lot of the legwork we have been doing to to get established and get off the ground, um, over the past few months. One of those, um, items was applying for and we received the five oh one C three tax exemption. We're a public charity, so, um, you know, it has obvious benefits for the organization, but it, it offers benefits for individuals or businesses that wanna make a donation and receive the tax credit that goes with it. But, you know, I think beyond that, our, our ultimate goal is, you know, if some, especially if somebody's making a donation, we wanna make sure that they're happy to do it because they feel like we're going to be giving them their money's worth, not just, you know, like an obligation and, you know, well, all right, I guess I'll give you a check 'cause I feel like I should. But we want, we want this to become a, a, an, an organization that the community's proud of, that paints Milford in an even better light than we already are. Um, and we wanna make sure that we're held accountable for that. Like, you know, we're not, we didn't set this up to, you know, just have, you know, fun club for Vinnie and Christina. This is, the, the goal for this is to support students in Milford and, uh, everyone at this table and in the community, uh, are encouraged to make sure we do that. So.
Mr. Chairman, I think.
Yeah.
Um, so when, when Vinnie and Christina came to me with this idea, I was thrilled. And, um, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't pick two, you know, brighter, creative, more energetic and thoughtful educators in Milford to kind of pilot this and get it off the ground. And, and they went through that, this big binder with all the, you know, the details and the legwork. And, you know, a lot went into just getting them, them to the point where they are, um, right now. And so I wanna emphasize that, um, you know, to keep the momentum going. It's February twenty eighth. Is it seven o'clock?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Six thirty in the library. And, um, I see great things in the future of this organization. And I think it's, a lot of it has to do with the two folks who are kind of spearheading it.
Right. And and it's not, and it's not just us. Um, you know, we have to acknowledge Peter Floso. I'm sure everybody knows him at the pool. He is on our Board of Directors, too. He was the first one to jump on board with it. Um, Christine Bemis over at Brookside, she was happy to be a part of it. Um, Anne Rollo, who is a teacher in Hope Dale, but lives in Milford, offered to be on the board. So we've, we've got a, and I think a reasonably diverse mix with a variety of different experiences in their backgrounds. So, uh, we are gonna take full advantage of that.
Certainly a passionate group and a very driven group. So, um, I know you can be very successful with this and, um, and really, really happy that you've taken the, the initiative. Uh, as you, as you pointed out, it's not only an opportunity to raise funds for, uh, programming within the schools, but it's a great opportunity to bring the community together, um, around the schools. And I love the idea of recognizing, uh, members of the community that that volunteer their time, um, and obviously recognizing teachers. Um, so it's, I'm, I'm really excited about this. I really appreciate you taking the, the initiative. And if this board can help out in any way, um, you know, reach out, feel free to reach out to any of us.
We appreciate that. And again, as a, just to reinforce the, for the, um, informational meeting on the twenty eighth, uh, everybody should, that's interested should feel welcome to come. They're not gonna be committed to doing anything. They're not gonna be, you know, signed up for a volunteer nightmare or anything. So they can come, they can share their thoughts and ideas. They can just try to figure out what we're all about and, you know, without worrying about getting sucked into doing something that they're, that they have no interest in doing. So, you know, we wanna be very transparent, very open and, you know, not inadvertently scare anybody away, right?
Mm-hmm.
Fingers crossed. But, and, and.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I, I think this is great. I mean, I'm just looking at the website real quick and it looks like it's not fully up and running with everything, but it's, it's great. It's volunteer, donate, you're gonna sponsors and I, I think this is a great idea and it's gonna work perfect.
Right.
You guys are gonna do a great job.
Yep. Our, our, I think our goal is to, you know, keep, think outside the box. You know, we're open to creative ideas, you know.
Absolutely.
Won't turn any, anyone down to at least hear them out. So get creative.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Have a good day, guys.
All right, Josh, you're up next.
I was wondering what we did with the license that we revoked from your computer for power presentation. I now see where it went.
I should, I.
It works the same way every time.
I know, I know.
Do I have any power?
Oh, no. Nope, it's not. Nope, it's happened to Matt Joseph. It's, yep.
Can we turn it off and on again?
Yeah.
Is there a power button there?
Craig, don't worry about it.
The power, the power button's up there. Joe and I are not gonna help you to go get that, so. Can sit with me, Joe?
I guess.
An open seat. Who's that? I gotta come here.
I was gonna say.
The ball must require a hundred. This'll be. Just on this side. So, projector won't shut off. No, it's on second. Why aren't you out? Yeah. You wanna do that, Joe? You wanna have the, the coaching group go and we'll try to figure out the technical?
Yeah, it's kinda works.
Rob, Rob Quinn's on his phone like this.
Yeah, right. And let's turn the heat off while we're at it.
Oh, cut, cut power. Don't wanna sneak out. Hey, Joe, you're on.
Oh, you have a computer, too?
Do you wanna, uh?
Let's give it one more shot.
Josh, if you could just present from your column, right? Uh, I could. I'd love to have something to show you, but, you know.
I did something.
I was coming down. There's a blue light now. Yeah, it's on the way. I just need to. Joe, you wanna call an audible?
This is the, um.
Why don't we do the, uh, the.
Should we just do it after this?
Uh, let's give it a second just 'cause he focuses on the screen. Why don't we do, care, let's do Kathy's part. We'll, we'll, we'll do this.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to.
Okay, don't stop Kathy while we're waiting.
Somebody's approved this evening. Uh, the first warrant is in the amount of one hundred seventy nine thousand, eight hundred ninety eight dollars and fifty six cents.
All right, motion, motion from Joe, seconded by Jen. All those in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion from Jim, seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
And the last warrant is in the amount of twenty nine thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and seventy nine cents. And the last warrant is in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Motion from Jen, seconded by Joe. All those in favor?
The committee also has a wish to the latest appointments from our previous meetings. We do have a budget update as well as, um, an out-of-state field trip request from the hotel and hospitality group to go to the, stay with me, to go to Mohegan Sun in Connecticut for a, uh, conference center tour. This, uh, field trip is scheduled for April 27th. They will be attending all day and there are approximately nineteen students attending. It is out of state, which requires a.
And motion from Jim, seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
I also have a travel request for out-of-state travel for, um, Lucy Jenkins. She would like to travel, um, April 8th through April 13th. She has a grant to re, um, to cover the cost, the expenditure piece. However, um, she will be out of state, which requires school committee's approval.
Where's she going, Kevin?
She's going to California for a conference that aligns with, um, the grant that she's received.
Did you guys all just apply to only ones in California? Didn't we just send you and Matt Joseph and Dr. Joseph out?
You might have. They always, they never put them in places like, you know, Sandusky, Ohio. You know, it was, uh, it's always, it's always like Vegas or Orlando.
Yeah, sounds like a terrible place.
I'll motion it in check. Motion from Jen, seconded by Scott. All in favor?
And I'll second that.
And there are gifts this evening.
We do have a, a gift, um, from the Lampin Corporation, a hundred dollars for the science alpia. Very generous gift from Lampin. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion from Jen, seconded by Joe. All in favor? That's a good sign. Some progress.
It's the only gift we had, Mr. Chairman.
What's that? That's the only gift. Yeah.
Do you want to go to sub, subcommittee?
Yeah, we'll go to subcommittee.
Budget?
Budget. Do you want to do the budget?
Yeah. Um, so we did have, uh, it feels like we've been talking about budget. It feels like we just started the project and by the same token, it feels like we've been talking about it quite a bit. So, I think everyone had an opportunity to attend, uh, earlier this week. We did have a budget, uh, meeting. Again, just reviewing a couple of the key initiatives, in fact, one of which we're going to hear a little about this evening, uh, with regards to the instructional coaches, one of, one of Craig's pieces. Overall, we're, we're feeling like we've actually made some very significant progress towards our budget. Um, I think our next step is we're actually working on trying to get a date to move forward with, uh, and meet again with the finance committee and be able to present to them, you know, where we are right now, um, and get, get a little bit of idea and guidance as far as, you know, really what are the town finances looking like at this point, as far as what we're expecting for receipts to come in, where we're expecting the budget numbers to come in. But overall, we're actually, we're actually well ahead of where we were at this point last year. Uh, for those who may or may not remember, our budget season actually carried well into the, well, well through April and into May. At this point, it's, you know, just past the middle of January here and we're already in a point where we're, uh, where we have gone through two cycles of it. And again, one of the biggest budget initiatives, we're going to get some additional details that we've asked for in the past. We're going to get some additional presentation this evening and hopefully be able to go forward from there. Anything I missed?
No.
Okay, that was good.
Thank you. All right. Um, I don't, don't believe we had a marketing meeting since the last.
No, that was just because we had back-to-back meetings because of the snow day.
Yeah, and wellness, was there wellness?
Yeah, um, I'll touch on that. I got some, some, just some notes that we had for this meeting.
Thanks, sir.
Um, you all know that this wellness meeting isn't with the social, emotional learning needs too. So a lot of good stuff comes out of this meeting. So that's why I just figured I'd give you guys the notes that we had. And I'll just touch on them, just on a couple real quick. Um, the first one, updating on upcoming district E, SEL presentations. When Amy Leonie, Leonie was talking, she was trying to find a way to get more parent involvement to come to these forums that we have regarding whatever it may be, homework or, or bullying, whatever. It always ties into like, you know, you have a famous person come in, as we draw your more crowds, like, you know, you have the Walbur that would come in, or some other person would come in and give meetings. You find that those ones have the most parent involvement. How else can we make that happen without so-and-so famous people? You know, how do we get them to come in? We tie all that into social media and everything. We try everything we can to get it out there, but still you get low turnout. So, um, that was one of the discussions that I thought was pretty important that we talked about. Um, just a couple other things. We have the school day games, um, special Olympic sponsored program for students in grades K through eight. Um, that will take place on April 12th with the rain date of 4/13. Um, we touched a little bit on school times. We kind of stared away from that one right now because we were in the midst of talking about it ourselves. So everyone knew that it's on the table and they were appreciative of that. Also, Carla and Kim, you know, they have the summer feeding program. They're looking to extend that, expand that as well, and then looking to feed over 10,000 meals coming out. So that's off and running pretty well. Again, in these packets, I figured I'd just touch on a couple of them. It was a very productive meeting, even though it was only an hour, but looking at these notes, a lot of stuff comes out of these meetings, so.
Yeah, you're covering a lot of material.
Right. Yeah, it's, that's why I just highlighted a couple.
So Joe, when you're going through these meetings, I know one of the budget initiatives that we're talking about is having a, um, social, emotional learning, um, director, uh, if you will, for, for the school system. Is that something that's been touched on these meetings? Is that somebody that you would see as now sort of taking over and running and coordinating these types of meetings? Um, or just, or certainly at least I would expect being a participant, but, um, is that sort of a topic of discussion?
You have Lisa White that does a lot of the talking for social and learning and stuff like that. So I think she kind of runs with it a lot. I don't think they've had a, a per se of a meeting of like, where, who's going to run this and who isn't for programs. But I think that's a direction that they're leaning towards. So it, it, a lot of good stuff comes out of it too, and everyone wants to take it and run, so.
Great. All right, so that's all the subcommittee updates. Uh, thanks, everybody. Um, so we're going to circle back to Josh's presentation now. Ready to go?
Yes, thank you for your patience. Thanks to Rob Keith for, uh,
Anytime.
for building us up. Um, so briefly, just before I make this, uh, this presentation today, I want to, uh, thank you for taking time out of your busy business to recognize all of our students tonight. That was wonderful for me as a principal to sit here and, uh, get to have you recognize them in this public manner. A great experience for our students. One thing that I was thinking about while this, you know, listening to all the achievements of our students and a lot of their, um, their engagement in different organizations in our school that make a difference, and then hearing our colleagues come up and talk about their work to launch this foundation made me think about something that I'm, I'm very proud of, like to share with you that hadn't been on my agenda tonight, is, uh, our school council is now up and running, um, here at Milford High School, and I'm very, very proud. We have a 23-member school council that includes 16 students on it. Uh, we have four students from every grade level. Uh, we'll be meeting, uh, next, uh, next Tuesday night or, or Wednesday night, um, for, for our monthly meeting. And, uh, it's, I think, it's a real reflection of the level of engagement in the student body and the level of commitment in this community, um, that we have 16 kids who are coming out for monthly meetings for our school improvement council. But I get, I think when you put it in the context of, you know, teachers, you know, taking initiatives to start a foundation, and you hear all the great work that our kids are doing, it's very much part of the culture here in this school, which is, uh, really exciting and encouraging for me as a principal. So I wanted to share that with you tonight in the spirit of recognizing the achievement of our students. So I also want to, um, Scott, you, you queued me up well in asking all of our seniors about sort of their, their future plans because, um, while I want to hit on a few different topics tonight, the thread that runs through it all is really sort of, uh, setting up our students for post-secondary success. Um, and so that was a good, good sort of primer for me. So, um, tonight, in terms of thinking about promoting college success for our students, I'm here to talk to you about a vending budget request to seek your support for a specific plan on how to spend the revenues from our vending machines. Um, I'd like to talk to you about some important updates that we're making to the ways that we measure GPA here at school, which is very much focused on our efforts to engage both our students and our families in planning for college success. And I'd also like to share with you just sort of a, um, a mid-year update on, on access and achievement in our AP courses and our early college programs, which are especially important in our overall work to promote college success for our students. So I'll start off, uh, oh, and, uh, lastly, I'll, I'll touch on early admissions. So a number of our students tonight share with you some of their recent victories. Um, I'd like to paint a broader picture for you of some of the early successes our students are racking up that we're very excited about. So first off, with the vending budget request, I, I believe in your packet, you should have a copy of, of the request. I'm happy to sort of answer questions on any of the specific items, but I would like to just sort of highlight the priorities. You know, 72% of the funds, this is a relatively modest allocation of $12,700. This is all monies from our students that they spent on the vending machines. Um, I'd like to spend 72% of that on promoting college-going and achievement. Um, $4,200 I'd like to spend to get as many of our students as possible out on college campuses. And I'd like to do this when our students are really, um, you know, in their freshman and sophomore years ideally. So, particularly for our more economically disadvantaged students, if we don't get them on college campuses, they may never get on college campuses. And I think to really foster a college-going culture, um, in the, you know, in our students from the very earliest stages of their high school career, I want to get them on campuses and get them excited. And so I'm hoping that we can spend a significant amount of these funds on doing just that. I want to support clubs that promote excellence and enrichment that are not otherwise supported by our budgeted monies. That includes our academic decathlon, our National Art Honor Society, um, our Italian and Spanish exchange programs, our mock trials, student government day, our chess club, and our music honor society. Uh, if we can't spend, uh, monies out of vending, um, to support these important clubs, um, they're just not going to have the fuel they need to, to sustain their activities. 16% of the request is related towards supporting safety. This has to do with funding our, um, our after-prom program and also our SAT organization. This importantly for our SAT group funds our mocks, our mock accident, which is an important part of our efforts to promote safety during prom season. And lastly is our, is our freshman orientation. This is, I, I think, a really critical part to getting our freshmen off on the right, the right foot, is having a very positive first experience here in the summertime. And, um, a modest sum of $1,500 will allow us to really put on a good show, um, for our newest members every year when they come in. So that's the, the venue budget request. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about any of these specific, specific items.
Does anyone have any questions?
Real quick, Josh, is this going to be something that you would want to do like every year for college and career? I mean, is this same list, it's just going to go to this every year?
Absolutely. That would be my hope. Uh, you know, uh, again, my, my hope would be that, um, part of a student's Milford High School experience is that in their freshman, sophomore, and junior years, they're getting off campus multiple times to visit, um, visit colleges. So that's a, that's a long-term vision. We're going to get there incrementally. But yeah, absolutely. I want, I want to see this be a regular part of our students' experience.
So I love the initiative that you're taking. I think it's great. I, I would tell you in the, in the time that I've been on this, on this committee, this is probably the most, uh, most transparency we've gotten into how these funds are being, um, allocated and where they're being used. So I think it's fantastic. I think, um, my question is around the college and career readiness. Really just my question on that is, is the 4,200 number that you've got out there is that, how did you back your way into that? Just trying to kind of walk me through that. And do you feel that that's going to be enough to get at least off the ground what you're start, what you're looking to?
Yeah, so, um, I apologize for not having these numbers at my fingertips. So we're basi-
That's okay.
Yeah, we're basing it on, uh, sort of estimated busing costs for running trips within sort of the metro Boston area. Um, so, for example, um, I'd like to, and I, I believe with $4,200, I think, I think we can run, um, somewhere between six to eight buses on sort of individual trips anywhere in the Boston area. So we can get approximately 40 students on a bus.
Yep.
So, you know, that's going to allow us, if we were to run just six, right, uh, we could get out, you know, 240 students. And so that would be either, you know, that could be pretty much the entire sophomore class right there, um, on, on, on at least one trip. And what I'd ideally like to do is, um, I'd like to have, I'd like to have the opportunity for students to select to go, to visit a program and a campus that they're particularly interested in, that they think is a good fit for them. So, for example, I'd like to run a trip to see maybe one or more four-year baccalaureate schools. I'd like to run trips where they can see one or more two-year, um, associates programs. I'd also really like to run trips where our students see different certificate programs that are available as well. So again, my, if my recollection serves me correctly, I believe that we're looking at somewhere between six to eight individual buses that we can run out to institutions in the metro Boston area.
And, and just along those same lines, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just, a- as you think about this, is, I know in the past, um, we've invited schools to come out and almost do like a college fair night.
Mm-hmm.
Where we'll, are the, one of my questions would be is, is thinking about it from a timing perspective.
Mm-hmm.
Typically, that's somebody that's reserved for the, you know, sort of juniors and seniors.
Yep.
Would you look to expand, continue that program, have something like that come out? Look to expand that program and even, you know, even with the intention of saying to the schools as we're inviting them to this, hey, here's a program we're looking to do. We're actually looking to take even freshmen to sophomore out there and start getting engaged with your schools. And really work with them really in, for lack of a better term, sort of co-recru-
Mm-hmm.
co-recruiting.
Mm-hmm.
Starting even at the ninth grade level and starting at, have them come first. Hey, this is what the school's all about. Great, create some interest. And then say, okay, by the way, remember that school you talked to? We're going to see you.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely. Um, I'd say along, uh, uh, very much so. And along those lines, I'd just share with you that, uh, Dr. McIntyre and I were at a meeting, uh, earlier today at Framingham State University, uh, meeting with representatives of both Framingham State and Mass Bay Community College. We're partnering with them to write an early college grant right now. We were awarded a $10,000 planning grant, um, so we're sort of making on to the second stage. And we were just talking today about how the work starts in eighth grade. Um, you know, we, and so sort of our long-term vision is really to be aggressively engaging with students and parents in the post-secondary planning process that starts in grade eight and comes, comes all the way through. So, the younger the better.
That's going to be my next question. It's, it is amazing that in the eighth grade, they're already starting to think about it and, and with some very serious thoughts. So that's great.
Yeah.
It's great that you're all going to.
Well, as, as I'll talk about GPA tonight, um,
Can I jump in real quick?
It starts in grade nine, so.
So we were one of, was it 15 districts across the Commonwealth that were designated as early college, um?
I think, I think, I think 15 who are sort of in the fight for the early college designation.
Yep. Okay. Out of 351. That's pretty good. Great.
Any other questions?
I think it's great.
Do we have to vote?
We do have to vote, yes, yeah.
So do I have a motion to approve? Motion from Joe, seconded by Jen. All in favor?
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. All right. So let's talk about, uh, GPAs. Uh, earlier in the fall, we had our annual, um, college planning night. And I announced, uh, that evening in response to some parent questions, that it was my intention to update our, the way that we calculate GPA here at Milford High School. And I'm pleased to announce that, um, we're ready to do so. And, uh, I'm looking forward to sharing with you and the public how we're doing so and answering any questions that you have. Uh, I want to let you know at the outset that, uh, my plan tomorrow, um, my plan actually is that tomorrow morning, all of our 10th and 11th graders are going to receive, uh, an individualized report, which is going to give them both updated GPA metrics as well as their PSAT results. And I'm going to be sending an email out to all of our parents in grades 10 and 11, and all of our students in grades 10 and 11, with a set of accompanying resources to help them really, um, make these numbers useful and actionable. And I'm going to show you some of those resources tonight as well. So, uh, I just want to do a quick primer on GPA, grade point average. It's a, it's a single number that expresses the average of all the students' final course grades. It's typically expressed in a 4.0 or a 5.0 scale. And this requires a conversion because when a student gets a report card, grades are reported on a zero to 100 scale. Whereas a GPA is on a 4.0 or a 5.0, typically a 4.0 scale. So there's a conversion process. We calculate GPA for three different reasons traditionally. The first of which is to rank students, the second of which is to determine eligibility for certain programs and awards. So as an example, for students to be eligible to participate in early college classes through federally funded Perkins grants at the colleges and universities, they need to have a high school GPA of at least a 2.5. And then the third is for college planning. Um, GPA is a hugely important number in college planning because it helps a student understand what, which specific colleges and what types of colleges might they be a bona fide competitor, um, at. So there's a lot of different ways that schools can and do calculate GPA. And it's important to understand, like, well, does it matter how schools do it if they do it differently? So when it comes to ranking, frankly, it, it doesn't matter. All that matters is that you're consistent because ranking is a strictly internal process. So as long as all of your students' GPAs are being calculated in the same way, you can rank them. Whether or not you, you know, we do it the same way as Franklin or Hope Dale, doesn't really make a difference because our kids aren't ranked against Franklin and Hope Dale. They're just ranked internally. The second is for determining eligibility for programs and scholarships. Here, the answer is possibly. I'd say more often than not, the way that we calculate GPA when it comes to determining sort of scholarships, um, it's probably going to be fine. Uh, most scholarships that we award to our students, the funders, uh, leave it to us to select students and they're not sort of looking over our shoulder to ask sort of technical questions about how we're calculating GPA and coming up with eligibility. But sometimes when students are looking to seek eligibility for outside scholarships or outside programs, they're not just going to take our GPA at face value, but they are going to be concerned about how we're calculating GPA. And they may ask for a transcript so they can do it themselves. When it comes to college planning, the way that we calculate GPA is hugely consequential. And I want to explain that, that to you right now. Why it matters, it's, it's so very important that we get it right, um, so that our students and our families have accurate information for the college planning process. The reason why it's kind of complicated for schools to select a way to calculate GPA is that colleges don't all do it the same way. So all colleges recalculate student GPA using their methods. This is so important for me to stress to our students, our families, and the committee. We put a GPA on a student transcript, admissions officers don't care what it says. Every college is going to take that transcript and they're going to plug all of those courses in to their own calculator to calculate GPA. They do not rely on schools to deliver an accurate GPA measurement. So accuracy in GPA is not for the benefit of the college admissions officer. Accuracy in the GPA is for the benefit of our students and our families, so that they know how their transcript is going to be interpreted in the admissions office. Accuracy in the GPA is for the benefit of our students and our families, so that they know how their transcript is going to be interpreted in the admissions office. Colleges are not particularly transparent about the ways they go about calculating GPA. Um, and I can't uh, sort of change that. Uh, that's just a reality in which I need to work. And I need to accept the fact that there is no single standard method that's employed uh, across colleges and universities, nor is there a method that's employed against, across the majority of colleges and universities. It's important to note that in just the past three years, Milford High School students applied to four-hundred-and-twenty different colleges. So trying to figure out, so what are we gonna do with that? Um, well thankfully, uh, the answer is, is not terribly complicated. We know, I, I, I think we know very clearly how we should calculate GPA. The objective needs to be to figure out how do we align our method to those used by the colleges that our students most often apply to. And uh, for, I think, for, 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 it's for the better for us that we know where our students apply. And uh, where they apply, of those four-hundred-and-twenty unique colleges and universities, there's actually only fifty-three that received more than fifteen applications in the last three years. And forty-four percent of those applications went to our mass publics. Um, thirty-three percent of all of our applications, school-wide, are going to mass publics. And if you look at our top ten lists of colleges, where, where our students apply to most frequently, seven out of the top ten are mass publics. And thankfully for us, the mass publics are highly transparent, not perfectly transparent, but highly transparent about how to do GPA. And it's in a document that's published by the Massachusetts Board of Higher Education, the MBHE. So again, my goal as the principal is to provide our students and their families with a GPA number that is going to be close to the same number that an admissions officer is gonna come up with when they look at that student's transcript. And I know that our students apply to the Massachusetts publics more than any other places and thankfully the mass publics tell us how they do it and we can do it the same way. And that's what I'm proposing that we do. So what's in these, it's important to note what's in the standards, but also what's not. Um, what they include is, uh, they tell us, they say, listen folks, here's how we convert from um, a hundred-point scale to a four-point-oh. We suggest you do it the same way. Um, they tell us how they weight grades um, between uh, college prep, honors and, and advanced placement. Uh, what they don't do is they don't give you specific guidance on which courses are considered electives and which electives will be um, included in the GPA calculation. And this is where the publics leave themselves a little bit of discretion. So for an example, um, AP Psychology, right? So AP Psychology falls within the Social Studies Department. A lot of students take AP Psychology, but it's not required for graduation, right? We have, you know, we have four social studies courses that are required for graduation, but AP Psychology is not. So should it or should it not be included in sort of the GPA? The state's not specific with us about that. Another good example would be Anatomy and Physiology, right? So this is an elective class, very academic in orientation. Doesn't fulfill sort of the, sort of standard requirements for high school science. So whether or not it gets calculated in GPA is gonna be something that's left up to discretion of individual admissions offices at the mass publics. I wanna clarify for you how we have traditionally calculated GPA at Milford High School. So when I came in, I sort of immediately started asking, so you know, let me see our sort of GPAs and I was um, frankly troubled at what I saw. So the, the first way that we calculate GPA is unweighted GPA. This is on a four-point-oh scale, which is good. But what's not good is that the grades are not weighted by level. So an, a ninety in an AP class, a ninety in an honors class, and a ninety in a CP class all count for the same. Um, the problem with this is that no college and university uses unweighted GPA. All colleges and universities look at weighted GPA. They care about the level at which you took the class. This is not aligned to the MBHE standards. MBHE does not use an unweighted GPA. So what we've been doing is we've been reporting a GPA to students on a four-point-oh scale that in many ways is, is really quite skewed. Now I'm gonna, in later slides, I'm gonna tell you just how skewed it has been from sort of weighted GPA measures. And so unfortunately, um, it's had the unintended consequence, I think, of misleading students as to where they actually stand with regards to their admissions. In some cases, it's been um, overestimating their GPA, but actually in the majority of cases, it's been underestimating their GPA.
Josh, can I just stop you right there on that side, just very quickly?
Yep.
For those, and I'm sure everyone in the room, because we see these things a lot, for those who may be watching at home, just very quickly, just, we've already talked about what uh, MBHE uh, stands for. Just very quickly, GPA, grade point average, AP, advanced placement course, CP, college prep course.
Yes, thank you.
Just understanding those leverages. Just, we see it all the time.
Absolutely, no.
Sometimes it gets a little inside baseball and maybe have some folks on the way now, maybe asking what that question is.
And also, just, just, just to clarify in our course leveling, there, there's a hierarchy with advanced placement being the highest level class, honors being the, the second level class, and college preparatory being the third level class. So thank you for pointing that out.
Thanks, Josh.
The second way that we've calculated GPA is we have had a weighted measure. The problem with our weighted measure is that it's been on a one-hundred-and-thirty-point scale. So we'll say to a student, um, your GPA is a one-hundred-and-twelve-point-four. And the student, the parent, what do you mean, one-hundred-and-twelve-point-four? Right? No one, uh, people are familiar with grades on a zero-to-one-hundred-point scale. They're familiar with a four-point-oh scale. But a one-hundred-and-thirty-point scale is not a scale that's used with any frequency and it's not recognized by admissions offices and it's not recognized by parents. And I think it contributes to causing confusion. So it's been good in that the grades are, are weighted and this is what we've used for ranking to identify who's our valedictorian and our salutatorian. But again, this has not been aligned to our MBHE standards. So uh, I think we need to make a shift to, to ensure that our standards are aligned to MBHE. So the way that we're calculating GPA at Milford High School today is through an MBHE GPA, which is cumulative. This includes every class that a student takes here at Milford High School. It is weighted, it is calculated on a four-point-oh scale and includes all of their courses. The second measure that we're calculating is what we're calling a core GPA. The core GPA is also weighted, it's on the same four-point-oh scale. But it only includes the courses that are used to fulfill the minimum requirements by MBHE. So MBHE says for a student to be admitted to a Massachusetts public, they have to take four English, four math, three social studies, three science, two world language. Everything else outside of that is outside of their required minimum. So we're calculating a core GPA that just includes those minimum requirements. Four English, four math, three social studies, three science, two world language. I'll explain to you the reason why we're doing two measures and not just one. So there's a difference between the cumulative and the core and how we calculate them. So for seventy-one percent of our students, the cumulative GPA is higher than the core GPA. So for about a third of our students, it's not. Where it's not higher is for our students who are taking a very large number of advanced placement and honors courses and they're earning very high grades in those classes. Their core GPA ends up being higher than their cumulative GPA. Their elective classes, which are weighted at the CP level, are actually dragging down their CPA, their, their GPA. So if you exclude their electives at the CP level and you're only looking at their, um, their core classes in honors and AP, the core is higher. So that's about one-third of our students, but for seventy percent of our students, the cum is higher than the core. The difference ranges from anywhere between uh, point-five-three to, to sort of point-six-six. So there's a fairly significant sort of range of difference between the cumulative and the core calculations. But for seventy, almost seventy-five percent of our students, seventy-four percent of the students, the difference between the cum and the core is, is within sort of point-two points. Um, so it's really not highly different for the vast majority of our students. I also wanna highlight what's different between this cumulative measure and what we've historically used, which is the unweighted GPA. And this is where there's a big difference. The cumulative is higher than the unweighted for sixty-four percent of the students, right? So that means that our traditional measure of GPA, the unweighted GPA, has been underestimating GPA for sixty-four percent of our current students in school. My fear is that that has discouraged students from applying to schools that are selective because they fear that their GPA is lower than it actually is. So I think it's very, very important that we make a course correction so that our students understand where they stand. This is, in, in some ways, this is a happy error to find, right? Because the correction is good news. When we're gonna make the correction, this is gonna help more of our students understand that they are more competitive than they would've thought they were under our traditional measure of the unweighted GPA. This is where we start to see a big span, right? So unweighted GPA is really quite skewed from using the MBHE standards. Um, the range is anywhere from almost a full point behind to almost three points above, right? So um, fi- only fifty-six percent of our students are in that narrow, that narrow range of variation of plus or minus point-two. So there's a really big difference between the way that we're going to calculate GPA now and the way that we've historically calculated GPA. It's gonna be a much more uh, true measure of how a GPA is gonna be calculated in a college admissions office at the mass publics. So let me explain how we're gonna report it to students and families and this gets to what the, our students are going to receive tomorrow morning in grades ten and eleven. So they're gonna get two different measures. One is they're just gonna get their cumulative GPA. We're just gonna give it to you straight. We take all your classes that you took in your freshman and sophomore years. We're gonna wait them, we're gonna give you your GPA. But what we're also gonna give them is an estimated range. And this is where the core comes in, right? Because we can't promise to students that UMass Amherst is going to use your cumulative GPA. We can't say, look at all the colleges are gonna count all your classes, because it's not true. They don't count all your classes. They're gonna pick and choose amongst the electives as to which they're gonna include and which ones they're gonna exclude. So by looking at the student's core and cum, we can, one of them's lower, one of them's higher, and that gives us a range. So we're gonna tell students, for example, that while your cum may be two-point-eight-zero, we're gonna give you an estimated range of two-point-eight to three-point-oh. So while I can't say to a student, I can't say I promise you that a college admissions office is gonna give you a, a, a two-point-eight GPA, I can tell you with a high level of confidence, your GPA is gonna be somewhere between a two-point-eight and a three-point-oh. And that's just being intellectually honest with students and parents, right? If we give them a single number, that I think is gonna have the effect of sort of telling people you can be guaranteed that this is your GPA, when in fact, we can't guarantee that this is your GPA because that's just not how it works, right? We don't get to tell the colleges how to calculate GPA. But by giving them an estimated range, I can say to students and families with a high level of confidence, your GPA is gonna be somewhere between two-point-eight and three-point-oh. And now you can use that for making your plans. We're also gonna give them this data along with their PSAT scores. So presently, we're having all of our tenth and eleventh graders take the PSAT in October of every school year. And in my budget request of this year, I've uh, requested money so that we can expand that testing to include ninth-grade students. And I'd like to show you right now why we feel it's so important that students and families are looking at their GPA numbers in combination with their PSAT numbers. Because when you bring the two together, you have a very powerful college planning tool. So let me explain how we recommend that students and families use this data. It allows you to assess your college readiness and engage in serious college planning. We're gonna give families and students access some, what I think are some pretty powerful analytics that are gonna start in grade ten. They're gonna show you momentarily. It's gonna allow students and families to see where Milford High School graduates with a similar GPA SAT profile applied and whether or not they got in, right? So just to look at your GPA and your PSAT, I mean, that's kinda abstract. We wanna plug this in and find out other kids who graduated from Milford High School who had numbers like this. Where'd they apply to college? Did they get in or didn't they? Now we can do some serious college planning. And we also want students to be able to see, like, if, if you sort of plug in your numbers and you don't like what you see, if you've had in your head like, okay, I really wanna go to BC. This has been my goal since I've been a little kid and your numbers aren't quite there, well, let's find out, let's find out what does it take to, to hit the numbers at BC so you know what that target is that you're shooting for. So let me take you now to a tool that we've built that I hope is gonna uh, do some good for our, our students and families. So PSAT scores are really helpful because they're a very good predictor of a student's SAT scores. And SAT and GPA, these are really the gatekeepers for college. This gives you a sense of where you've got a shot of admissions and, and where you don't. So students and families are gonna have the opportunity to come to this tool. And as you can see at the top, there's two tabs. There's student profile and college profile. On the student profile tool, they're gonna put in their GPA range. So I'm gonna say that my GPA range is on the uh, three-point-two to three-point-five-nine. An SAT range for maybe twelve-hundred to thirteen-ninety-nine. And this interactive chart is gonna show me which colleges Milford High School students graduate. Within this GPA range and this SAT range, where did they apply and where did they get in? So I can look at this and I can say, well, let me go down to the third one. There's eight kids from Milford High School in the past three years who had scores like mine, who applied to Northeastern University. Six of them didn't get in, two of them did. That doesn't mean I shouldn't apply to Northeastern University, but it gives me real data to understand what are my prospects at a school like Northeastern University. I, I can look at UMass Lowell right above it and I can see there was ten students in the past three graduating classes who had numbers like mine. Nine of them got in, one of them didn't. Alright, UMass Lowell's a safe for me, right? This is a safe school, right? I've got pretty good odds here. On the other side is the college profile. And this is where students and families can look up any particular college. So the one that I have up here is Providence College right now. This shows all Milford High School graduates from the past three years that have applied to Providence College at different GPA and SAT combinations. And so you can see sort of where this falls. So you can see, like, if you really wanna be a competitor at PC, I mean, you have to have a GPA in the three-point-two to three-point-five-nine range. None of our students who've come in under three-point-two have been admitted to PC, right? And just because you've got a three-point-two to three-point-five-nine doesn't mean you're getting in. Actually, most kids in that range didn't get in. Six of them were rejected, four of them were accepted. But we can see that kids that were up above three-point-six, they got in.
Josh, where are you pulling this data from?
So we're pulling all this data from, so we, we purchase a, um, we have an annual subscription to a college planning tool called Naviance. And Naviance pulls data from um, what's called the National Student Clearinghouse. And um, that allows us to track what happens to our alumni after they leave here.
That's great. And are you able to look at, um, so let's say someone is interested in going to a school that maybe a student hasn't applied to before?
Mm-hmm.
Texas A&amp;M or something.
Yes.
Are you able to research what the requirements are?
We are, yeah. So Naviance is an incredibly robust and powerful tool. Um, in the letter I'll be sending to students and parents tomorrow, there's gonna be a link to Naviance. Um, it's been, uh, it's been really underutilized by our families right now and I hope that this effort is gonna help to increase utilization by our families. And this tool, which I've created, I've decided only to include schools that received at least fifteen applicants in the past three years. Um, I think when, when the N gets smaller, when the number of applicants gets smaller than that, I've become less sort of confident in sort of the predictive value of these, of these measures. Um, but on Naviance, you can see um, every school that Milford graduates have applied to. And you can see what their metrics were and whether or not they got in. Um, and if there's schools that you wanna apply to that Milford High School students haven't got into, there's gonna be a wealth of data about um, who gets into those schools and who doesn't. So this is, uh, we're exporting data from Naviance to build a custom tool that I think is frankly, a little bit more user-friendly than Naviance. Very simple. But um, with a little bit of effort, uh, Naviance has got a, an incredible array of tools that I think is gonna be really useful for our students and families. Joe-
Josh, how far does the alumni range go back?
Um, I'm not s- I believe we've got data going back to two thousand and one or two thousand and two. I'm not certain that's correct, but I believe that that's, it's, it's somewhere in that range, yeah.
Okay. And then can you benchmark yourself against, I know obviously against um, kids in the district, but can you look at kids on a national level?
Uh, through Naviance, yes, you can. Absolutely.
So that'll be an available option?
It will, yep.
Josh, is that available only to parents who have um, sophomores and juniors right now, or if you have an eighth grader or a ninth grader, can you access?
No, no, so, and this is, this is public on the web, so we're gonna be pushing this out, making it available. So the first target outreach is to parents in grades ten and eleven.
Yeah.
Then once we get everything, once we get all these resources live on our website, um, I'll be sort of pushing out to sort of all of our parents to let them know that this is available. So I show you this to, a- again, to make the point that um, with good reliable GPA measures and by having students participate in the PSATs and giving that data together, I think this allows students and families to, to really sit down and start having a very serious conversation about our, like, what, what are we talking about? Like, what are our goals? Are we on track for our goals? Are we not on track for our goals? What's the target I need to hit to achieve those goals? Um, and I, I, I hope that this is gonna really stimulate those conversations early and often. So as I said earlier tonight, I wanna be getting our students on college campuses starting freshman year. Mentioned that Dr. McIntyre and I were at Framingham State today and planning a grant that wants to reach down to grade eight. Um, I wanna be doing PSAT testing with students in grade nine. Um, I don't think we can start these conversations with our students and our families early enough. I think the road to college success um, starts in frankly, uh, elementary school. Um, but as the high school principal, I'm really focused on my school in the, in the grade immediately preceding. Uh, and so I think this is gonna get us a, a good ways there. Before I go back to the presentation, any other questions on this tool?
Yeah, just Mr. Chairman, if you may. Um, just a couple of quick questions. So I, I love the tool. I think it's fantastic. I think what would be helpful is, cause I, and you've, you actually pointed this out even just going back to your, to your interview about a year ago, it feels like. Um, when you go through, there's more than just the GPA and the SAT that goes into that piece.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any other, are there any other data points that either this site or something else that kinda can point to? Because it may be, so as an example, I look at Northeastern, you were talking about, right? So if I'm a student in this GPA and I'm a student in this SAT range, there's things that I can do that's gonna help improve my scores, which is, and I can work harder and I can change my GPA. Are there other things that we can kinda look at and say, okay, so why did the, what made those two get in that those other six didn't? Um, and some other data points in, in addition to, it's a two-part question. First, that's the first part. Second part is, is how proactively is guidance going to be? Um, it's some feedback that I've heard pretty consistently over the last couple of years where I, candidly, I think guidance is underwater um, at the high school. And that's not a, not, nothing disparaging against the individuals that are there. I, I think it's a use, I think it's a resource right now to where we need to probably start to add some additional attention and focus. Either they're being under- Um, either they're being underutilized or they're just, they're, they're so inundated, inundated with everything that I think they're, they're not able to get to everything that they need to. How are we coordinating this with our guidance?
Sure, well, so let me start with the second and come back to the first. You know, I think as, as far as all of our sort of college planning and college access work goes, I, I'm convinced in working with my colleagues over the first half of the school year, um, that we're working plenty hard. Um, I think the job now is to work smarter, and I think that we can use data to work smarter. So, you know, one of the ways that we're very, that, that I'm very keen and that our, our counselors are very keen on is that we need to offer, I think, a highly differentiated programming for parents around college planning, right? So to have a, a college planning night for all twelfth grade plan, for all sort of twelfth grade parents, um, is, uh, I, I think frankly, I don't, I don't think it's on the mark. And I've already spoken to our counselors about this, and we're, and we're gonna be making some major revisions for next year. So I think we can be using data, um, be it GPA, PSAT, survey data that students complete and parents complete. We're actually gonna do a pilot with freshmen, um, starting in just two weeks, um, that we're gonna be rolling out. So that we can really, so that we can offer sort of a diverse menu of parent education offerings through our guidance department and that we can do some target outreach, right? So the, the, the type of service that we need to provide to, um, frankly, uh, your children is very different than what we need to provide to the child of, um, parents who did not grow up in this country and did not attend a college or university in this country, right? Um, so there are things that, um, things that you know and understand, um, that, uh, you don't need to be taught by us that you, we just sort of take for granted as somebody who's maybe grown up in the American public system and has gone to college and university. So, um, A, I think that in terms of improving the performance of our sort of college access and college planning work, I think that we need to work smarter, and I think that need, I think that means using data in a much more, um, sort of effective manner to deliver, uh, sort of well-targeted and differentiated types of program and intervention to parents and students depending on where they're at. Taking a one-size-fits-all approach is, is not a recipe for success. Um, and can you tell me your first question again, please, Scott?
How do we identify what the other intangibles, potential intangibles or other pieces that got them either approved or?
Yeah, so that is why we employ professional guidance counselors, because the quantitative data only takes you so far in understanding, um, how do you get into a school that, that you wanna get into, right? So, and, and it's, you know, I'm, it's, I don't think this is an appropriate venue to sort of get into sort of the nuance of that, but just to give you sort of one piece with, with Northeastern, which I focused on earlier. You know, we have a, a lot of really high achieving students who've applied to Northeastern who haven't got in, right? Well, so why is that? Because probably over ninety-five percent of the students who apply to Northeastern are totally qualified to go to Northeastern, right? They're really, really good students. And so Northeastern University is a highly selective school, has the luxury of saying, let's put together a student body that, you know, um, that has the composition that's exactly dialed into what we want it to be, right? So, you know, we want this many football players and this many Oboists and this many kids from the West Coast and this many kids from the Southeast. And it's not just all a metric game for them. They're not saying who's got the best numbers. It's not even who's got the best essays and who's got the best references. But it's about where you live and your demographics and, you know, your family income and, and, and what you do, right? So at highly selective schools, um, metrics only get you so far in understanding why do some get in and why some don't. Um, I think particularly, you know, as we get down, if you start to look and, and I'll just dial back here, and maybe the two point eight to three point one nine range, maybe the one thousand to sort of twelve hundred. This is where the metrics, I think, really start to, to, to sort of tell you a whole lot more. Um, and really helps students to understand, um, what types of schools am I gonna be a competitive candidate at, right? Cuz we can say to a student, like, look, if you're in that two point eight to three point two range, you've got SATs above a thousand, you can feel pretty good about getting into UMass Dartmouth, Bridgewater, Worcester, you know? Um, and so now let's, let's do some planning. Is that where you wanna be? And if not, let's think about where you do wanna be and how we're gonna help you get there. Does that make sense?
It, it definitely does, and I, and I appreciate that. I, I know there's also some seminars and there's a number of specialists that'll come out and kinda do different presentations, and I think it would be helpful, and I love the fact that you're looking at the earlier grades, not just focusing on it. I, I think it has been a missed opportunity to really just get into these college planning conversations when, when your student is seventeen, eighteen years old. Um, the horse has sort of left the barn at that point, so to speak. Um, there's a number of different things that can play into that, and I certainly understand that. Is that something that you're looking to start to incorporate as well? I, I'll give you a specific example of what I'm asking about. Um, I had a colleague of mine whose son was looking to go to Notre Dame. That's the only place he wanted to go. He was, he was absolutely determined, he wanted to go to Notre Dame. He had all the grades, everything else, there were a couple of pieces that were missing from the intangible side. He went and met with somebody, the admissions person said, I'm actually getting ready to go to lunch. Um, in my office, I'll tell you officially why, the reason why we declined you. Um, if you wanna know how to get in, I'm leaving my office in about fifteen minutes, and I'm happy to have a conversation on the way to wa, on the way to lunch. As soon as he walked out of the building, he said, uh, would you consider majoring in library engineering? He said, why? He said, because the engineering program that you wanna get into has way too many applicants for it, and it's much more highly selective. However, once you get here, you can change your major to anything you want. As long as you get in here and major in library engineering, it's underdeveloped. I'm actually looking for kids right now. I'm taking kids at lower GPA and lower SAT levels and admitting to Notre Dame simply because they're willing to major in something that I can't find enough candidates for. And then they can get in and change their major. Are we looking at just even having somebody like that? And there's all kinds of different folks that are coming out, a kid that did end up going to, and, and library engineering, so.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think, um, you know, I'm very keen to try to provide as much information as possible um, to our families and students so they can, um, so they have that to their advantage. Uh, you know, I think, uh, a number of you may know Paul Linsky from the Blackstone Valley Education Foundation. You know, um, I've been very thankful to, you know, Kevin introduced me to Paul early in my time here, and you know, uh, Paul and I are working together closely on a, a, a number of discussions related to this. So we, uh, there's, there's absolutely, um, you know, one of the advantages that, um, you know, i- if you think about families that, that, that pay for sort of private college counselors, right? The reason why some families pay for private counselors is there's people who've got inside information, right? Um, and insider information can be advantageous for students, and so anything that we can do to get that kind of insider information that you're talking about into the hands of our students and families is gonna be to their benefit, and we wanna do it.
I think that's great, even though insider information, every hair on the back of my neck is a finance person just stood on end. Um, what few there are, I, I think it's, in this case, it's a very good thing.
Josh, just a quick question on the, the logistics here. Um, so you mentioned the conversion from the traditional way we calculated GPA to the cumulative, and there was a range of minus one point one four to two point seven. Um, so how does that factor into this tool? Are you, are you converting the historical GPAs to a cumulative as well? So you're comparing apples to apples or?
No, no, so there's definitely a skew here, right? Cuz all we've got is the historical GPAs. Like, I can't go back and recalculate, um, the historical GPAs in Naviance, I just don't have access to that, that arc, that sort of archived data.
Yeah.
So there is definitely, so, but with that said, because our new calculation, the MBHE cum, right? Produces a higher GPA for over sixty percent of our students in the unweighted, right? We're sort of, we're to the good here, right? So, you know, one of the messages that sort of my, the counselors have got loud and clear and that we've got is like, look, it's, it's not all about GPA, but keep in mind here that when we're comparing sort of our new GPA to our old GPA, the old GPAs were underestimating the actual performance of most of our students. So the new GPA measures are gonna be to the benefit, um, of, of our students. So again, it's not, it, it, it doesn't have the, the level of precision that I'd like it to, um, but it, we, we're working with what we have, and I think that, um, I would be wary of rolling out a tool, tool like this if our new GPA measure by and large was lower than our old GPA measure. But since that's not the case, I feel, I feel good about putting this kind of data in people's hands.
And you, you compare the cumulative to the, what we're doing historically. Um, how does the, the core compare to what we're doing historically? Is that more correlated or less correlated?
Um, no, so I haven't run those metrics. If that's something you're interested, I can, I can certainly take a look at that variation, but I would, because for most of our students, the cum is higher than the core, um, and the cum is higher than the old unweighted, I think there's gonna be a smaller range of variation between the, 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 the core and the unweighted. Again, the unweighted was underestimating for many of our students, and for sev, and for seventy percent of our students, right, the cum is higher than the core. So I think, I think core is gonna be closer to unweighted than cum.
So, and obviously you've put a lot of thought into this, and you were doing some of the analysis. Um, did you identify pockets of students that may be negatively impacted by this change and how we're gonna address that?
So, um, you know, to be candid, if, if folks have concerns, I'm happy to address them, but in my conversations with our, um, our administrative team, our counseling staff, a number of college admissions counselors who I consulted with, um, I don't believe that any of our students are negatively impacted, um, by this change. Again, there is no college that takes the GPA in our transcript and says, oh, that's your GPA. Every single college recalc, recalculates a GPA once they receive the transcript. What we're doing is we're giving students a more accurate read on how those admissions officers are gonna calculate their GPA. So if any of you have concerns if, about how this might negatively impact students, I'd certainly wanna hear that. Um, cuz in, in my sort of consultations with colleagues both inside and outside of, of the district, um, I heard no concerns. I'd also add that sort of in, in sort of contemplating this, this change, I had a lengthy conversation with Carrie Benak um, on the phone, and, uh, Carrie was, uh, very supportive of this. And she acknowledged that, uh, sort of the, the way that GPA had been traditionally calculated predated her as a former guidance counselor. It was something she had been concerned about. She felt like it wasn't a matter that she was able to address during her tenure here, um, but she was very supportive of, of moving forward with this change.
It's, it's, I mean, it sounds like with the, with the, the students are actually being, there's, the students are more being negatively impacted now. The sixty-four percent that it would actually be recalculated would actually be higher. The other, you know, thirty-six percent, it wouldn't negatively impact them, it just, it would not be as positive as it impacted. It would, it may, they'd be neut, they'd be neutral.
So I mean, li, listen, I mean, if, 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 if a student's GPA comes in lower under the new calculation, the old calculation, all we've done is we've just been more honest with them, right?
But it may have been that we, what it sounds like is, is for that sixty-four percent of students, it may have been in their mind, we may have been, their GPA may have been telling them, you know what, if I cross my fingers, I may be able to get into X, X school, when the reality is, is that they actually, based on their qualifications, by calculating it this way, they actually could be looking into a different tiered school. It could be a different level school. It gives them that extra confidence and edge to go out, to stretch themselves and really apply to some of those schools, which I think is fantastic for obviously a majority of our students.
So again, by my calculations, it's about thirty percent of the students whose GPAs were being overestimated. Um, I mean, we, that's, we're doing students a great disservice by giving them an overestimated GPA. We're really misleading them to think they're stronger candidates than they actually are.
Um, just one clarifying question and then a comment. Um, when you talk about a GPA being calculated out on a four point oh scale, students in this, um, method that we're using now will still have the opportunity to go beyond a four point oh. When I, you sent us some supporting documents, and one was a conversion table. Um, so it looked like when you're taking the AP or the honors classes, you, you will still be able to exceed.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Um, and so this is a, uh, this is a little bit of a, just a strange feature of the jargon in sort of the way that GPAs talked about, um, in sort of college, in the world of college admissions. While the standard for the mass board of higher ed is a, what, what they call a four point oh scale, the four, four point oh is not the highest GPA you can earn. I'd say in practical terms, like, our, our very top students in the senior class this year, um, who took, who really maxed out on AP classes and excelled in those AP classes, their weighted cumulative GPA is probably around a four point three.
Okay, okay. Um, I, you know, the comment that I wanted to make about this part of your presentation is when you came in, one of the things you shared with us is your love of data, and, um, you know, when I first looked at the PowerPoint today, I knew it needed the explanation from you to really bring it to life, so I appreciate that we were able to have the opportunity to hear this. Um, but what I'm hearing is a process that's, that's been really thoughtfully planned out, and even the fact that you consulted with your team, you consulted with Carrie, the people that have been here and living this system, obviously you've come in new. Um, but I, I, I personally can't see any detriment to still honoring the work and the students that are taking courses of different levels of rigor, um, but really giving them that honest look. And putting it all together, this is, it's really a pretty amazing package.
Thank you.
And focusing on the younger students, um, you know, as a parent of, of a freshman, it, you may as well be speaking Greek to me, I don't understand or know any of this. So I think the education that our families need from the high school, no matter what your background is, whether or not you're a college grad yourself, um, you really need it, and I appreciate your points about differentiating and supporting our students who may never see a college campus. So I, I think all of this is pointing us in a great direction. So thank you very much.
Let me try to be, um, sort of brief in closing out here, um. If I didn't just, uh, freeze this up. Which I may have. Jen, you might never get to use the computer. Oh dear, here we go. All right, so it won't be in presentation mode, but sort of, uh, bear with me here. Um, last thing I wanted to leave you with tonight is just to sort of, you know, to sort of carry through this theme of college readiness, is I wanna give you an update on where we're at in terms of trying to increase achievement at the most rigorous level. Cuz the best way for us to get students prepared to be successful in college is to have them take, uh, hard classes here and do well in those classes. Students who take tough classes in high school and do well in them, do well in college. Um, and so one of our objectives is to get, um, as many students as possible into the most rigorous classes as possible and support them in being as successful as possible in those courses. Our AP courses, uh, you know, we've, our numbers are in for last year. We offered nineteen subjects. We had, uh, very strong participation. One third of all of our students in grades ten through twelve took at least one AP class. Um, in many, many high schools, uh, students don't take AP classes until they get into their junior year, right? This is thirty-two percent of our students in grades ten, eleven, and twelve. We also have freshmen who take, uh, AP classes. We have, uh, AP World History, which is offered to freshmen. Um, last year, we had sixty-one point four percent of our students who took the AP tests earned a score of three or higher. Three is the traditional benchmark for what's considered a qualifying score in AP exam. Uh, I went back for the ten years of publicly available data on AP scores, and this is the best in any of the last ten years. Uh, I'm really, really pleased to let you know, and I'll just sort of talk you through this here in a moment, that our AP performance has gone up while our participation has gone up, and, uh, that is a, that's actually a remarkable achievement. I'll explain to you why. If you look at the top, the top line in orange, this shows you the percentage of our students who are earning scores of threes, fours, and fives going back to two thousand and ten. You can see that last year was our highest year ever, that, that was sixty-one point four percent. You can see at the same time, if you look below at the blue line, that the number of tests taken has gone up dramatically from two hundred and sixty-seven to four hundred and forty-six. So as an educator, my, you know, my hypothesis would be like, as you increase participation in your AP program, as you bring in more and more kids in the AP program, your performance is gonna go down, right? Typically, in AP programs, the way that schools have operated is you only bring your very best students into the program, and so they do really well on the exam. If you start to widen out the pool of students who are gonna take AP classes, I think it's reasonable to estimate that your aggregate performance is gonna decline. In fact, that's not what we've seen in Milford High School. We've seen that we've substantially expanded participation in the program. We've substantially improved performance in the program, all with a shifting demographic context where our students have become increasingly disadvantaged over time. This is, um, you know, I, I mentioned this in, in my interview, and, you know, I think these numbers bear it out. This is a remarkable achievement for Milford High School to have done this. Again, to expand participation, to improve performance, all our students are becoming increasingly disadvantaged. I am not sure that you can find another high school in the Commonwealth who has that story to tell. And it's one that I'm very, very proud as the principal to be appearing and to share with you. I can take no credit for it, for it, and I'm, I'm riding someone else's coattails on this one. But, uh, I'm absolutely thrilled to share with you, um, that we are making great strides in helping our students access the most rigorous courses available and succeed in those rigorous courses. Our other main strategy right now for sort of promoting rigor and achievement is our early college program, which is, I think, really sort of in its, in its beginning stages, but I, I'm very excited at where we're going. We're running three courses this year. We're running two right now, and we'll run one this summer. I'm very pleased that we have thirty-seven students enrolled, and we just started our first class last night through Framingham State University here in the Milford High School campus. And I am, um, I'm really excited to let you know that of these thirty-seven students who are participating in these two courses, that ninety-two percent of them are receiving free reduced lunch. Um, I'm really excited about this because early college is a proven strategy for increasing college access, retention, and decree, degree attainment for economically disadvantaged students. Um, there's a number of reasons for that, but one of the most important reasons is that it can significantly bring down the cost of higher education. These thirty-seven students right now are going to earn three mass transfer college credits that can be applied to any public university or college in Massachusetts at absolutely no cost, right? Um, this is a huge benefit to these students. Um, again, I mentioned earlier that we've been awarded a planning grant in partnership with Framingham State University, and I hope that, um, in every year, as I come before you to tell you about our early college coursework, I hope I can talk to you about more and more students who are earning more and more credits at little or no cost. Because the more students that we can get who are in college credit while they're here in high school, the more students who are gonna be successful will go into college and completing college degrees.
One of the things, if I can jump in, Josh, that we may see though is, um, a bit of a flattening out of the participation in the AP as the, um, participation in the early college increases.
Um, and I'd say that that's certainly, um, I think that's a reasonable hypothesis, but we'll also have to see sort of where this goes. Um, it's not, it's not certain that we're drawing from exactly the same pools of students. Um, and certainly, early college, while I think can benefit all students, we're particularly interested in trying to bring in economically disadvantaged students into our early college program. And certainly, early college, while I think can benefit all students, we're particularly interested in trying to bring in economically disadvantaged students into our early college program. And we think that that's where we're gonna see the greatest return on investment for our students. And lastly, just early admission, you heard from some of our award winners tonight about some of the schools that they've been accepted to already. We've already received a hundred acceptances at fifty-three colleges, including a number of colleges that are highly selective. This includes Bates, B.C., Clark, Colby, Holy Cross, NYU, Providence College, Rutgers, UMass Amherst, University of Michigan, Villanova University, and WPI. One of our award winners tonight didn't share this with you, but they were deferred at Harvard, and we're hoping that they'll be granted a regular admission at Harvard down the line. So we're very proud of our senior class and the fact that their achievement is being recognized by a number of the most selective schools in the nation and the region. And I'm looking forward to sharing more more success stories with you in the spring as more and more acceptance letters come in. So I know that was a lengthy presentation. I thank you for your thoughtful questions and your attention. I know that the technical details of GPA can be a little tedious, but I appreciate you paying attention and asking those questions. If there's anything else I can share with you before I go, I'm happy to.
Any other questions?
No, I think, oh, this is awesome. Thank you, Jen. Well put. I like I like that app where you can go and find out where your GPA is and figure out what college you might be able to get into. I think that was have we had that before or is this brand new?
That's been a feature available through Naviance that very few of our families have used. And the Naviance, it's a little bit more complicated to to sort of interpret visually than this. So this this is a new way of presenting the data.
Beautiful. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, thank you.
No, you did a great job with the presentation. I also wanna compliment you on the the supporting documentation that you put together for the budget process as well, and then the work that you did on the analysis of the assessment data. So to Jen's point, you know, we talked a lot about some of your analytical capabilities during the interview process, and we're starting to see the benefits of that, so.
Yeah, definitely thank you for that. I look forward to seeing some of the some of this can start to get integrated certainly in the lower in the some of our lower grades too, as they continue to move their way up. And yeah, certainly in the budget process as well. Thank you for your, you know, it showed as we see each principal that goes through, and it's it's interesting cause I don't know if you guys see each other's budget requests and what the each and what everyone's budget process and everyone looks like. There's not a standardized format, I can tell you that. Maybe that's something we should look at moving forward. It's getting there. It's stepping in the right direction. But I think you it shows that you're being aggressive, you're you're very driven to try and get the school to where you believe it's capable of being. And we should clearly share that vision and support for you. We may have you go do some budget requests in some of our other schools that may be asking for things that are a little broader than perhaps that you're looking at. But I I think you you really were very thoughtful in that process, which is great, so.
And thank you. And I mean, one thing that, you know, that I just would say is that I think high school education, for a number of reasons, lends itself to quantitative analysis in a way that often doesn't happen at the younger grades. We whether it's whether it's GPA, you know, PSATs, standardized test scores, we are swimming in a sea of quantitative data in high schools. So, you know, clearly, I mean, you know that for me, I think this is an important part of my job is to is to be very sort of, you know, critical and empirical in the way that I do my analysis. But I think part of that is by nature of working in high schools as well.
Right. Thank you.
Probably not.
Yeah. Typically, it's done during invitation to to speak, but you go ahead, you can ask a question.
My my own question was is that do you see extending this down into the lower grades, into ninth grade, maybe even into eighth grade? Cause you're thinking that this is where the kids really need to start thinking about college. That would be interesting to see that, you know, it's I know it's new and I know it's not right there. But I think I agree with you. I mean, eighth grade is where we need to start thinking. I'd love to see this extended down into that.
So I I can speak most clearly about ninth grade. So, you know, in ninth grade, one of the things that we're we we have not done now, but I hope to do in the future, is GPA is only calculated on end of year grades, right? So I can't give a student their actual GPA until we have their end of course grades, but I can give you an estimate of your GPA halfway through the year. And what I'd like to do with our ninth graders next year is if they take the PSAT in the fall, then I'd like to say to them in January, well, here's how you did on the PSAT, and here's your estimated GPA right now, let's sort of let's sort of plug it in and see where you stand. I think part of what we need to do with ninth graders and, you know, I think eventually sort of work down to eighth graders as well is just helping students understand what is GPA? How is it calculated and what difference like what does this number mean, you know? It's a it's it's in a lot of ways, and I think particularly for eighth graders developmentally, this is a difficult thing to.
I have to tell you, you have ninth graders that are already thinking about it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And I I think developmentally, it's a difficult thing for for some students to wrap their head around. It's also, you know, frankly, emotionally, it's it this is a kind of it's a sort of ugly reality of of adult life to to say to kids like, you're quantified. You know, you're gonna be judged as a as a number by people who haven't met you. You know, in some ways, it's nice to, you know, prolong that day of reckoning when we, you know, bring that reality in front of students' eyes, but we also don't do them any favors by leaving them in the dark. So I think trying to strike a balance and, you know, I certainly wanna work with, you know, Nancy and my colleagues in the middle school to think about what's the right time, place, and manner to sort of work with middle schoolers in that way. I feel pretty confident about making decisions around how to engage high schoolers in that, but middle school is a little bit outside of my wheelhouse. So I'm gonna, you know, wanna wanna collaborate with my colleagues on that.
I can throw one more piece out. Is the Josh earlier in his presentation talked about using some of the vending funds for college visits for for students. And that's it's kind of new ground for us. Not a lot of public high schools do that, where they bring kids en masse to college campuses. And if we see success with this type of a program at the high school level, we'd love to expose our middle schoolers to just like, what does a college campus look like? What does a college classroom look like? What does it mean to be on campus? And we'd make some connections with some of our alumni and some of our college partners that we're working with on a number of projects. But we wanna see if it works at the high school level first before we even attempt to the middle school level.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
You've been patiently waiting back there.
We're gonna cross our fingers that this word is still.
Yeah, let's, uh.
If you guys wanna pull chairs right up to the table too, feel free. I know you're excited about that. I know you're excited to do that, Dorothy.
Welcome and thanks for coming tonight and being so patient.
Boy, Jen, your technology worked right away for you. I don't know what Josh's problem was.
Thank you for having us here this evening. We've come to talk to you about instructional coaching and for public schools or the possibility of instructional coaching in public schools. When I came to present about EL a couple of months ago, I told you on the last slide, a bunch of highlights that were happening. And one of those highlights was instructional coaching that was happening within the within the EL department. But really, now that we've gone through it, would would love to see that it expands outward. So to give you a little bit of background on the instructional coaching piece, so Matt Saw Massachusetts Association for Teachers of Second or Other Languages offered an instructional coaching class for the first time in the summer of two thousand and fifteen because the SEI endorsement course was finishing it was finishing and rolling out, but really finalizing. And they wanted to see how are the the how is the SEI endorsement requirement that all teachers had to have tied to their licensure? How is that rolling out after teachers actually took the class? Are they applying the strategies? And if they're not applying the strategies because it's one course and people get their masters and doctorate in applied linguistics, how can we help teachers to continue growing, serving servicing our fastest growing population in Massachusetts? So Desi put out a bid, and Fitchburg State University picked it up to develop a course for instructional coaching. So in the summer of two thousand and fifteen, the first course was offered for instructional coaches for math teachers. At that point, I reached out to Andrea Rota, who's the math C T L at the middle school level. We didn't have the the math intervention teachers at the K two level at that time, so she was the first person that I thought of. I I reached out to her. John Sbraza was a first year math teacher at the sixth grade level. She asked if he would be interested in in doing this course with with her because it was a three-credit course, which took a week and a half in the summertime and then a whole fall semester. He said, absolutely. So the two of them really are are the first to take advantage of this course. Then in the summer of two thousand and sixteen, Desi then reached out again to Fitchburg State and said, can you develop one for administrators? How do administrators support instructional coaches within their school? And so I reached out to several principals, and Lisa Burns emailed right back and said, I'm I'm highly interested in doing this. So Lisa Burns signed up, and in the summer, she went for two weeks to Fitchburg State University and followed up through that coursework, master's coursework in the fall. And then they offered it again this summer to SEI math, SEI coaches, math coaches, and literacy coaches. And so I thought, okay, let's now that we have an administrator who's taken this course, let me reach out some to to some teachers at the at Memorial Elementary. Cause what could happen with the what could happen at a school that supports it administratively, has it within their building, and and have some teachers that are really devoted and interested in seeing how we can grow as professionals? So I reached out to Kim, who took the she was one of the twenty-one teach twenty-one teachers that took the practicum to to be licensed when we were doing that in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year. And I said, Kim, I'm interested in taking this class as being a coach. So I myself, before I I go forward in the school district to encourage that we have coaches in in district, I need to do it myself, see what it's about. So I was like, but I want somebody here that's gonna be able to be in the school day in and day out, seeing what that looks like and how it can be applied. So Kim said yes, and then we had to have a teacher to work with us that we were going to coach. I went to Christine Skiba. She's a kindergarten self-contained SEI ESL teacher. She also did the COCOR to be duly certified in fifteen, sixteen. And I reached out to Skiba because I'll be honest, I said, I'm not in the I'm not able to be in one school. Let me pick somebody who will meet with me outside of contractual hours, you know, meet with me and plan with me whenever that's flexible and is flexible to meet with and organize this. And then and then Kim reached out to Dorothy, a second grade SEI teacher at Memorial. And so really, that's the background. We took a a a course, a three-credit course, two weeks over the summer, which was really intense, and then all fall going through a coaching cycle. The coaching cycle exists consisted of a pre-observation meeting and talking to, well, prior to that, an interview and survey, getting to know Christine and her philosophy, and then comparing that to my own, so that when I was in the classroom, I'm I'm looking through her lens, getting to know what she wants to improve in on on her own and and guide that in her instruction and within my observations. So we were able to meet and do that through the cycle of pre-observation, observation, post-observation, and go through that three times. And so that's the background for for how we got here to this point. And then I'm gonna let these ladies speak to their experience.
So I just wanna start by publicly thanking Jen for asking me to do this in the first place, way back at in the spring of last year because I am such a better professional and person because of this experience that I can't I can't thank you enough for asking me. So thanks, thank you, Jen. As Jen said, you know, we took this course and it was very intense and we gave up some beach time for sure, but to do it, but it was well worth it. And and I I said in a meeting earlier that I will do anything, and I do mean this, I will do anything to convince you all that we need coaches in Milford. We have very highly qualified, and I put that in quotes because on paper, everybody looks awesome, teachers in Milford. But we need to, as a as a teacher in the building all the time, working with my colleagues all the time, we need to give the support at that level to these teachers so they can be the best. You have clearly at the high school, everything seems to be working, you you know, from Mr. Outland's presentation. But of course, it starts with us. It starts with us. We're the K through two people, and we need to, you know, we're not so much worried about our students going to college as much as we're worried about, you know, them learning to tie their shoes and read, but and add a little. But it's important that we give the teachers the support that they need and the education that they need to be the best teachers that they can be. So Jen, would you mind popping me up? So I just wanted to go through the top five reasons why Milford Public Schools needs coaching. The first is teachers don't know what they don't know. They learn something, they try it, they do it in their classroom, they work on it every day, but they don't know if they're pulling it off or not, right? There's nobody telling them, hey, did you think about this? Hey, did you notice that? There's nobody to tell them in a non-judgmental way, in a non-evaluative way, that they could improve their pedagogy. They don't see their own blind spots. But a coach can come in and do such a thing. A coach will come in and observe based on the teacher's request at what they want to work on cause it's based on the teacher's goals, what did they wanna work on, and can observe that. And then in a non-judgmental and evaluative way, tell you what you could do or help you, in my case, help you come to it on your own. Because as I said, we have very qualified teachers in Milford. You don't really have to give them the answers, but sometimes you need to guide them a little bit or ask them the right questions. Instructional coaches will help teachers focus, as I said before, on their goals. This is not something that administration is gonna come and say, you know, Chris needs to work on teaching math or whatever. This is something that Chris comes to the coach and says, look, I'm really struggling with, you know, this behavior management in my classroom. Could you please come and observe my classroom and meet with me over a series of weeks, months, semesters, the year, and help me develop a plan that works, given these students with this set of personalities in this classroom? Not what I learned or didn't learn in my college course or in my practicum. Because this is what's actually happening. These are the the students that are actually in front of you. And a coach can do that because they're in the building all the time. A coach will also bring resources. As I said, it's not always telling them what to do. It's more asking the right questions so they can get to where they need to go or where they want to go. But it also is saying, hey, have you read this? Have you looked at this? Have you visited this classroom? This person used to have the same problem that you are having. Maybe you should go visit with that classroom, or maybe you should have a conversation with that teacher and see what they say. What do they do that works that you might be able to use? We have started, you know, the P L C process in Milford where the teaching teachers are on teams now and they're meeting with those teams. But the other kindergarten teachers might not have the same behavior issues that Christine has, but a first-grade teacher might. Christine's schedule is so packed, she's probably not ever going to get to step into a first-grade classroom. But if I can come to say to her, you know, Jen had the same problem that you are having, you should really go talk to her. It at least gives her the direct line to where she needs to go to get her information. A coach will know that because the coach will have visited all the classrooms and is constantly present in those classrooms. A great thing for you all is that a coach can bridge the gap between what the administration and what you guys are putting forth and the teachers. You implement these programs or you ask us to implement these programs, and you provide us the training to do so, the professional development, but then that professional development person goes away. Who's there to help me figure out how to do that? I took that class, I sat through your lecture, I practiced it with you, but then you went away. And now I don't know if I'm doing it correctly or not. A coach is there to be able to check in on that and can then be a voice back to the administration that says, hmm, I think you might wanna bring in some more professional development for this because I don't think they quite understood overall. And it's not finger pointing to this particular teacher. It's just saying, I'm not sure that as a whole, the team is getting it, and so maybe we need some more professional development on it. And so maybe we need some more professional development on it. Um, and this is the most important point, it is not evaluative. This person is not an administrator. They are separate from that. They're not going to be a mole for administration or anybody else. That's not their job, their job is to help the teachers. Assuming that you, um, agree to add this to your budget and give us this as teachers. You will be giving us a tremendous, tremendous gift. Because we need support in the building. To be able to implement the things that we need to admin- implement. Because the state says so, because you states say so, and because we care about our students as much as we do. Um, we did a do's and don'ts, the coaches do do certain things, they don't do other things. Um, they don't work independently, they don't evaluate, we've talked about that. Um, a coach is not going to make judgments on whether or not you're the best teacher in the building. You're the worst teacher in the building, that is not what a coach does. A coach's job is to make everybody better, everybody better. Um, they do not resist change, so it needs to be somebody that's flexible. Um, you cannot expect perfection. I've never seen a perfect person or a perfect teacher, so. I'm not one, so, um, I don't think a coach can expect that even after a coaching cycle. The person that you're working with may still not have reached to their goal. And that's okay, because I guarantee you they've improved. Um, there's no personal agenda, a coach is not going to come in and say, okay, I want everybody to. Do running records this way, you know, we're not, that's not what a coach does. And then acting like an expert. I'm not an expert on coaching, I'm, I was luckily enough to do this with Jen. Um, and these ladies is very fortunate. But when I was coaching, you know, my first thing that I said to Dorothy was. We're gonna do this together, we're gonna muddle through this together. I've never been a coach before, you've never been coached before, so we're gonna work through this together, we're gonna work out the kinks. Um, so that's something that, you know, your coach needs to go in and, and, and say. So we've, I know that you wanna know numbers. I'm not, uh, Josh, and I don't have statistics and I'm sorry, I looked. I will tell you that, um, I spent a lot of time looking. I assumed there had to be studies that would prove that coaching improves teaching. Because it does, I've seen it firsthand, absolutely does. I wasn't able to find that, but what I can tell you is that. You have all this human capital, right? I mean, that's what we're in the business in, you're in the business of human capital. Investing in that human capital is your best job, um, and most important job. So giving a coach to the schools is going to tell us that you are investing in us. You want us to be better and we want to be better for our students. Um, the sustainability is really important. We have teachers that, um, you know, they want to get better, but they don't know how to get better. This is going to, because the coach is always there, this is somebody that can continue to. Um, meet with you over long periods of time, short periods of time, can help you with different goals all the time. Um, and. Coaching really al- allows for accountability, self-accountability, reflection. Which is something that we've been working a lot on this year in our district mindfulness and this is part of that. Like really helping somebody kind of look at themselves in a mirror, um, and see. And it's, it's equitable, it's not just for your lowest performing teachers, it's for everyone. It should be for your highest performing teachers, because again, we can all get better. And then finally connecting school to district. Um, again, no offense, but you're the suits. And, um, you know, we're the pe- the men on the ground, so to speak, and a coach will really kind of help bridge that gap. Between the things that you're trying to implement and the direction you're trying to go. And what is actually happening in our buildings.
I think the next slide is our last slide.
Oh, good, okay, so now I'm done and I would, um, I'd like to ask these guys to share their experiences of coaching.
Of being coached, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm Christine Skiba and I had the pleasure of working with Jen. And one of the things that I truly appreciated was those pre-conferences where she came. And really tried to understand my style of teaching, which to some may look a little bit outside the box. Um, and the other piece that I really enjoyed was the whole self-reflective piece. I feel like I'm a self-reflective teacher, but I can't see what I don't see, I can't reflect on what I don't see. So when she came in and did the observations and then you have a chance to talk about all of those little blind spots. Um, it gives you a chance now to reflect on many different aspects of your teaching. Um, the other thing that I really appreciated was the non-judgmental way she came in. Um, and I will say that on our last cycle, it was, uh, a week and a half before the holidays. Last period, night of a full moon, kindergarten. So that is as real as it gets. So it was fantastic to say, okay, I'm tailoring it to behavior management, this is my area of need. This is the perfect setup to see what is what and it, it just gives you such valuable information. So it was just tremendous, tr- tremendously, tremendously valuable.
And I have to say that this has been the best experience I've had in my teaching career. Um, from a developmental perspective. Um, when I picked up the phone and Kim said, hey, you wanna be my partner with this coaching thing? I didn't know the whole coaching part of it, it was just, we're gonna learn new strategies for, um, for pedagogy and. All this cool stuff and I said, I need that, didn't tell me about the coaching thing. Um, but what a gift I've been given. This is my sixth year of teaching and I wish I'd had this earlier in my career, like my second or third year, it would have been fantastic. Um, it gave me the courage and a platform to try new ideas and, and new ways of doing things. And it was so nice working with her, um, she would come in and ask all the right questions. Um, and to get the timely feedback, we, the feedback has been the most important part of this, this whole thing. Um, often we go through our day and we certainly reflect and think about what we do. But it's nice to see, to have someone else's perspective. You only have your own if you're reflecting and so it was fantastic to have another set of eyes looking at what I was doing and how I was doing it. Um, we were able to put together rigorous lesson plans at, as part of this process. Um, engaging and lots of cooperative learning, which made it much more fun for the kids. Than the worksheets I had so long used in the past. Um, you know, not only did the kids learn the academic skills that we wanted them to get out of this particular lesson. But, um, they worked on their teamwork skills, their listening skills, their speaking skills, all those things that are important now. But they're going to be even more important when they get to high school and beyond and into the workforce with all of us. Um, so my, my coach positioned feedback to me in a really positive way. Um, and one of those people that, you know, you can't chast- chastise me in, in public. Um, you have to pull me aside and, and she, she always delivered things in such a positive way. Um, she knew the questions to ask to get me to what I wanted to work on. Uh, never once did she feed me an answer or force me to do it because that's what they said to do in the book. Um, she guided me to the answers and into what, um, I wanted to accomplish. Um, so my confidence as an educator during this process has really increased. Um, and, and I love the fact that I got to be a part of this experience, I'm constantly trying to hone my craft. And, um, but with the help of the instructional coach, it became a much more efficient process. Um, I didn't have to go out and do the research online about how to do something or hit Pinterest one more time. I had her right there with me. So, um, it's a great opportunity for us to, you know, we're, we're good, we're, we love it, we love our jobs, we wanna do well. But it's a chance to take us to that next level where we really wanna be. So, thank you.
So we'd like to end with. Everyone gets coaching, right? And any questions you have.
I'll open it up to the committee, any questions?
So, uh, so ladies, first off, thank you, I, I, um, as I've shared on a number of different times. Um, having been raised by two lifelong career school teachers, I realize that probably the least favored part of your job is coming in front of you. And speaking in front of the school committee, so I appreciate you guys taking your time out. It's late, so we'll, we'll try to be brief and really appreciate you guys, um, taking that time out of your schedule. What that also tells me is how important that is to you. Um, it, it's twenty after nine on a Thursday. Um, and it's been a long week, you had a snow day yesterday, I'm sure the, you know, especially the students at the younger grades. Bouncing off the walls today. Um, so I can only imagine the day that you've, that you've all had, so that really speaks volumes to me as a, as a school community member. That you were willing to come out, you're giving up your free time. Um, you said you gave up some beach days as well, probably today was not one of them, but, um, and really that kind of meant to it. I, I do have a couple of questions for you in addition to just the thanks for not only participating and, and being, you know, fearless, quite frankly, and volunteering for this. So we've kind of talked about this a bunch, this isn't the first time we've heard about it, Jen sort of softened the beaches a little bit, um, a little earlier. Um, Craig may have mentioned it once or twice during the budget procedure. Um, I think we're about nine PowerPoint presentations in on this from, from Craig, he's the next one, we're gonna take it off of this computer. Um, but we kind of talked about what does that look like? Um, there's two things, so I, I, I'm not an educator, I'm not a teacher, I work in a bank, which is really not very exciting. But we have coaches, we, we do, um, I, I've worked for very large organizations most of my career. There's some good side of coaching that I've seen, um, seen the other side as well. Um, where you see some of those don'ts and unfortunately, human nature sometimes does creep in. Um, the other piece that's really hard with coaching is, is the last couple of years, we've dealt with some really, really good overall budget times. It's really, really great, which is why we're able to institute some of these things and even start to consider them. It feels really good as a school community member when we can institute those things. Um, on the other side of the coin, there are times when those budget conversations are not nearly as pleasant. Um, and it feels really bad when we have to cut some things. Coaching is one of those things, unfortunately, in the private sector, that's usually the first one to go after. Um, because it's a non-revenue generating stream in our world, um, and it's tough to quantify in yours. When you think about your roles, if you were sitting in our seats and we asked this question to Craig when we had a budget meeting earlier this year. Um, if you had about two-thirds of a million dollars to spend in the next three years. Thinking about everything that's going on in the schools right now and everything that's going on in education and all the things that you do. Is this where you would put it?
Well, yes, and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Um, my daughter is, um, a student at Woodland this year and shh, I received a. Informational piece of, about MCAS and whatnot. Um, it taught, it showed exactly how, um, Milford did as compared to the state on the MCAS testing. Um. I go back to the investing in your human capital. I, as a parent and, you know, also as an educator, am able to look at that and say, okay, well. My daughter's very happy, there's lots of things she's getting from her teachers, I know they're very, very good. Um, you know, and she's, she's meeting all the standards and her scores are great and that's great. I look, um, at the, at the projection of where Milford lies in these younger grades. And now especially after hearing Josh's information and seeing where we want these students to get to. Um, you need to invest in the teachers to get the students to perform the way you want them to perform. Um, and a coach will do that. You're also looking at, um, because a, a coaching position is not an administrative position. M- most likely you have somebody already in district that's already receiving a salary. Um, that you're already paying, that is more than qualified to, to take on that role as, as coach. So it's not as much of a, um, adding more re- adding more. It's just maybe more about diverging your resources a little bit. So for me, I, I think of it and I, you know, having coached Dorothy, I thought she was a good teacher before. I can't even tell you the growth that she made. We met and I saw her first class, I observed and then we met again, we had a post-observation. And then we had our pre-conference for our next observation. The difference between observation one and observation two for Dorothy. In just that one session, those two conversations was phenomenal. The rigor of her academics, um, and her instruction. You know, was much higher in the second observation. The children were all much more engaged, she had many more activities going on. She had, um, of, you know, more differentiation for those students, a lot more talking. She was invested in one group, working with one group. Um, and was able to do that while the other students were working in smaller groups. It, it was just such an amazing transformation between session one and session two. That I look at all the other teachers in Milford and think if they had that same opportunity to have somebody sit with them and help them. I can't even imagine what our scores would look like, MCAS-wise. So I say to you, probably being a math banker type person who wants numbers. I'm not asking necessarily for more resources, I'm asking you to consider. Investing your resources in a better place.
Yeah. And, and again, I, I don't think it's a choice one way or the other, but no, I appreciate that. And, and I guess, so one of the other things that was on one of your slides, and if you can go back to the one that's the do's and don'ts. Just so, cause it'll refresh my memory, thank you. So one of the things that you have on here. Uh, might be the one before. There we go. Um, so kind of thinking about this role, um, certainly be the, the non-evaluative piece and I, I, I couldn't agree with you more, a coach can't be your boss. Um, though your boss should be coaching and that's part of what their evaluation process is. Um, it, it really is a different role, that's just my, my personal philosophy on that, my personal thoughts. If you were to design, and this is sort of one of the things that we've sort of talked about, is. How do you divide up those resources? So if we were to pick and, and, and look to fund and create three coaching positions initially. One of these we gotta figure out is who they report to. And I would ask you as teachers, so I'm gonna leave you out for a second, sorry Jen. Um, as teachers and as educators, how would you feel if rather than this coach doesn't report to your principal, but they report to central office?
I think that that's fine.
Does it matter for you or is it, cause I, I can see both sides where it's the, ooh, wait a second. Not only they not report to, we don't report to the same person, but now they report to central office and, and to the suits.
One of the, one of the things that, um, we spoke to Kevin about when we met with Kevin, um, a couple of weeks ago. Is, um, is that very thing, I mean, he, he posed it to us and said, are your teachers going to buy in on this? Talk to me about your buy-in. There are definitely going to be some naysayers, there always are, there are always people who are resistant to change. There are always people, and I'm one of them, who is suspicious of the new people that come into the building. I tell my colleagues all the time, I hate the new people. I learned to love them and they be.
It's good you're creating a one with more community environment. It's great.
But, but it's scary to have.
Plays well with others, check, you know you're on TV, right?
Yeah, it's scary to, I've said it to everybody, it's okay. It's scary to have somebody new come into the building. And one thing I said to Kevin when he sort of asked me about this is, I place all this onus on the coach that is hired for this position. It is up to the coach to create a welcoming and open environment. It is up to the coach to make sure that the people know, the teachers know, that, that, that she or he is there for them. It is up to the coach to reach out to those teachers and make herself or himself available to provide those services. Um, that's a lot of pressure, I know, for the person who takes on this position. But, you know, like Dorothy said, she knows me, we, we've worked together. So when I called her and was like, hey, let's do this and you're gonna let me coach you and. She wasn't so sure about it, but it was up to me to build that relationship with her and to talk to her about it. And I think in terms of the staff themselves, I don't think they're gonna care who the coach reports to. It doesn't matter, as long as we roll it out and the district rolls this out in the right way. Explaining to the teachers exactly what the coaches. explaining to the teachers exactly what the coach's role is and what it isn't, and explaining to the teachers, you know, that this person is here for you. This is not somebody here for administration. I, I think, you know, and, and you guys agreed when we met with Kevin, it's, it's really about how you're gonna roll it out to the teachers in the district and let them know what a coach's role really is. I mean, they just, we don't, we've never had coaching here in Milford. And, you know, I, I talked to a lot of people, um, in our building and told them I was coming today. Um, and they said, you know, for what? And I said, oh, for coaching. And they kinda looked at me and they're like, you're gonna coach? And I was like, no, it, not that kind of coaching, not sports coaching. But this is something new to our, our district, so it's new to our teachers. Um, they're not familiar with the concept. So we really need to roll it out in the right way, um, and frame it in the right way. Um, to give them access to this opportunity and to really frame it in, as an opportunity, as a gift for them. Not, not something punitive, not something that's related, you know, to their merit score, their job, you know. It's something for you.
A resource.
A resource.
It's definitely a resource. And I think having it not report to the principal would be very reassuring that it's not evaluative. Um, I mean, it certainly doesn't matter, but.
I mean, the person is not gonna have an office next door to the principal. That's, that's not how it works. You know, the, the coach is of the people. You know, the coach is not.
Is there a coach-the-coach component to it as well? I, it's, obviously you get some, some coaching skills as well. I'm thinking about from a professional development, so part of the coach's role is to design a professional development. Is there then sort of a coach-the-coach component to it as well? As the coach is trying to help the teachers continue to sharpen their skills and build their craft, the coach needs to do the same as well and continue to have that piece. Is that built in as part of this as well?
Into our program specifically, I'll answer that through Fitch, Fitchburg State University. Um, there, we were implementing it and then providing them feedback. And at this point, we had to submit that right before the holiday, um, break in, in December. And we're, we're waiting for, for our feedback at, at this point. Um, so part of our program through Fitchburg State, there was no necessarily continued coaching of coaches. Um, but as Kim said earlier, like, boom, figuring this out too, you know, um, at the same, at, uh, as the same time, they were learning together. Um, I think that it, it would be an important piece. And I think that, um, coming from central office, if, if coaches were to report to central office, um, administration, like you mentioned, I think that they have the expertise to coach coaches.
I also think, you know, we're three teachers sitting here and we all need to, um, we're all part of the masters, um, program going on at Framingham State. Part of the reason we're doing that is because our job as teachers is to be continually educated ourselves. I don't see the coach any different than that. Um, the coach is a teacher, teacher of teachers. It is the coach's responsibility to continue to get professional development on their craft. If their craft is coaching teachers, they need to get professional development on coaching teachers, just as we are required to get coach, uh, professional development on teaching.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
No, I will. You know, during our budget, um, presentation that we've had with Kevin and when a lot of information about this has been shared with us, number one, he assured us that you would do a far better job than he of introducing instructional coaching to us.
Was that accurate?
Uh, yeah.
They didn't have to comment when you'd add.
But, you know, I think the things that stick out are, it seems relatively ground roots in terms of, you know, you have a lot of teachers who are at the very foundation of this work. And I know Mike Walsh has talked several times. I wish he was here to hear this tonight, um, because he was wondering, um, multiple times, how would this be received by teachers? And I think to know that it's coming from teachers, um, and the feedback that you've had about the success of it so far is really meaningful. And your point, I think, is very well taken. You know, we look to Craig and we look to Kevin to create that big picture of the district. And I know I've heard them talk multiple times about the most recent research and understanding by design and all of these things in, in teaching and learning now that we're all looking for as best practice. And I have to say, you don't always see that translating into the classrooms. And that's really, you know, we've been short an assistant superintendent. You were the first one we had after a real void in that position. And we have a lot of great movement there, but principals can't possibly handle all of the, the instructional leadership role that we wish they would have the time to, to take on. And so we do need those people, the cheerleaders, who know best practices and who can go in and really support. Um, so, you know, I think you certainly, granted, there are questions and implementation rollout and all that, but I think there's been a lot of support, not to speak for the committee around the table, of just the, the philosophy of coaching and the benefit that it can have for our students. Um, and I, I think you'll do a great job selling it.
Thank you.
And you did it tonight, so, thank you.
We're fairly, very passionate about it because it works. And, um, you know, you, it seems to me that the district has, has really started asking teachers to provide more professional development ourselves. That seems to be something that has happened in the last, um, couple of years, where we're really not relying on outside sources necessarily to come in and give a presentation, but really, you know, utilizing the skills that the people you have here have. Um, and I see this as being very similar to that. Um, being able to have somebody that can help continue the rollout process. Our principal's job is very different from when I was a student, um, and had a principal. You know, um, they're putting on so many hats now that instructional coach and advisor is maybe one of the smaller hats that they have time to wear. Um, and, and that's at a detriment to their staff. Um, it's necess-, it's necessary 'cause that's just the world that we live in and the decisions and the fires and the this and the that. You know, I just think about, you know, Mrs. Burns and all the things that she goes through. And I've been in her office to ask her a question and I, you know, it's a revolving door of people and she's constantly putting out fires. So to ask her then, and of course, she has to come in and evaluate us and, and to know, but to ask her to, on top of that, know everything she should know about literacy or math or science or, I mean, it, it's impossible for her to do so. Um, this person kind of would help ease that burden for her, um, not from an evaluative standpoint, but just sort of keeping track of the fact that the teachers are following, um, you know, the programs or, or really keeping up with the learning and, and, and providing that. So I think it's, it's not only a gift to us. I think the principals would be very happy about it. Um, I think that the union would be very happy about having, um, a coach. And, you know, when we, when Jen and I were in the program, when we took the class last summer, um, there was a multitude of different towns, um, represented. And I just wanted to point that out because at first I was like, this is for people like Wellesley and Weston. This is not for places like Milford, you know, but in fact, it, it quite is. There was such a, a diverse group of towns that were represented that already had coaching. And in fact, we were one of the ones that didn't. Um, you know, New Bedford has it. Yeah.
Brockton.
Brockton has it. Franklin has it.
New Braintree, like Braintree.
Braintree has it. So just a lot of towns that mirror ours, um, in their demographics and their sort of financial makeup. Um, this is something that they've had, you know, for a long time, or they have implemented in their towns. So, and it's not just the towns that have a higher.
Yeah, I think the only thing that, kind of, you mentioned the point about the, um, some of the numbers and how we're gonna measure things. And I think we did talk a little bit, and this would be yours to work out. You know, do we create a, a coaching position that's more structured and focused so the coaches aren't running in seventeen different directions? Do we talk about, not really we as a committee, but all of you when you roll it out, do we talk about focusing on one content area to start with so the coaches really have an area to focus on and some data to bring back about? And it may be number of tens in classrooms or things like that versus, um, numbers of student, you know, test scores, especially in the very beginning stages. Um, it, so to really try to focus the work, um, at the very beginning at least.
Any other?
That's for your future discussion, yeah.
Any other questions or comments for the group?
Can I just say one thing before we wrap up? You guys did an awesome job.
Thanks.
Next time we need to sell something, I'm bringing you guys.
In fact, actually, if we could start with you next time.
It's a lot more pleasant.
Thank, thank you, ladies. It was, and again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Awesome job.
Future agenda items? Does anyone have any future agenda items? Any old business? Business, yeah, we don't have an executive session.
No, it's just.
All right, no executive session. So I do have a motion to adjourn, motion from Joe, seconded by Jim, all in favor. Good night, everyone.
Good night.